Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Planning Commission. We're happy that you all are here, and my name is Dan Grotnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission, Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin Bozork, Sorullo, Prow Anzoom, Dweck, Gold, Goodridge, Kermati, Marine, Osorio, and Ramperchat. It has been a great start to the Department of City Planning in December, and also for all of New York City. Really glad to announce that the City Council last week voted to approve our City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality Initiative. These vital changes will help our buildings, roads, and neighborhoods become more energy efficient. In the face of a climate crisis, this initiative is the boldest, most thorough update of our zoning resolution related to the environment in its history. From solar panels to electric vehicle charging, from building retrofits to recycling and composting, we are creating a cleaner, greener future for our city. I want to thank the City Council and Speaker Adrian Adams for their favorable vote on this essential work, as well as the supporters of City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality throughout this process. But most of all, I want to thank the stellar Department of City Planning staff who worked tirelessly on this initiative, especially its lead planner, the amazing Niles Klingel. Thanks to all of you. Some other big news from last week has to do with our fellow Commissioner Leila Bozork, who Mayor Adams has named as the city's new Executive Director of Housing. This is an enormous win for New York City. Leila, you are an incredibly dedicated, enthusiastic, and impactful public servant, who has also been an amazing and collaborative member of this commission over the past year and a half. And while you're going to be missed by all of us here, I am really looking forward to working with you in your new role to create a more equitable New York City. Let us give her one more round of applause with lots of cheers. All right, I also would like to thank everyone who attended our Long Island City Neighborhood Plan Focus Area Meeting on Housing last Wednesday, co-hosted with Councilmember Julie Wong and facilitator WXY Studios. This was a great opportunity for community stakeholders to get involved and to discuss what they wanted to see here when it comes to housing and income-restricted housing. If you missed it, don't worry. We are still in the early stages of this planning process, and there are plenty of meetings to come. We're hosting two more topic-specific meetings later this month. On December 16th at 2:30 PM, we will focus on economic development, arts and culture, and community resources. And on December 18th at 6:30 PM, we'll hold a conversation on the public realm, transportation, waterfront resiliency, and open space. You can RSVP for these remote meetings at www.licplan.nyc. Finally, I would like to thank high-ranking members of the U.S. Census Bureau for visiting the Department of City Planning's population team last week. They joined our team for a demographic discussion and tour of Jackson Heights, Queens. As the Bureau unveils its detailed demographic stats from the 2020 census, we look forward to working this data into our great population fact-finder tool to put it at New Yorkers' fingertips. Moving to today's agenda, we will start with a biggie, the introduction of the Green Fast Track, a proposed rule from DCP, HPD, BSA, and MoEC to streamline environmental review for small and medium-sized housing proposals. The Green Fast Track, which we're starting rulemaking on today, is a major step forward to address both our environmental and housing crises by speeding approval and cutting costs for sustainable housing developments. In looking at over 1,000 environmental reviews over the last decade, City Planning staff found that these types of developments consistently show no negative impacts on the environment. As part of our work for Mayor Adams' Get Stuff Built Agenda to speed up processes and get more housing constructed faster, we are proposing that these projects be eligible for a Green Fast Track for environmental review. This will cut months of time and hundreds of thousands of dollars from the approval process for these environmentally friendly projects, helping New York get much more much-needed homes in the ground and open for tenants significantly faster. Next up, we have a proposal from the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to dispose of four city-owned properties in Douglas and Little Neck, Queens. These sites are mainly very small, undevelopable lots. Heading to Brooklyn, we will next discuss Red Hook Coastal Resiliency, a proposal by the Department of Design and Construction, Department of Transportation, Department of Citywide Administrative Services, and Department of Parks and Recreation. With funding from FEMA, this significant plan ties together natural topographic high points and a variety of design elements like roller gates and flood walls to provide protection from sea level rise and future storms for the entire neighborhood. It also includes a major expansion to the Brooklyn waterfront greenway. And our final new proposal for today is a mixed-use development that would create 45 homes, over 10 of them income-restricted with ground-floor retail, at 396400 Avenue X in Gravesend, Brooklyn. The site is less than 10-minute walk from the Avenue X F train stop. So there it is, our agenda for the day. Sarah, I'd ask you to go ahead and get us started. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, December 11, 2020/30. The time is 1:25 PM, and a forum is present. The first item on our agenda is a citywide monologue review for a City Administrative Procedure Act (CAPPA) rule change. Presenting for the first time to the Commission is Alexandra Moskowitz.
All right, Alex, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. We are excited to introduce you to our proposal to implement a Green Fast Track for housing type 2 rulemaking. This particular proposal is the result of the Building and Land Use Approval Streamlining Task Force, or BLAS, and the Get Stuff Bill Report, which sought to reduce regulations and inefficiencies and speed up the creation of affordable housing, drive economic growth, and build stronger communities. First, we will give some background information on the need for the proposal and where it fits in with environmental review. Then go into the proposal and how it would be implemented. The city is facing two monumental challenges, a climate crisis and a housing crisis. Unfortunately, outdated rules, including outdated environmental review rules, are making it harder to address either crisis. The best thing you can do to cut carbon emissions is to live in a city like New York. We have lower per capita carbon emissions than virtually anywhere else in the country because of our density and our access to transit. But our current environmental reviews do not encourage smart approach. At the same time, we are rebuilding nearly enough housing to meet the demands of New York City. Existing rules, which impose enormous costs and delay on modest housing projects, are standing in the way of building the housing we need. These costs and delays drive up the cost of individual housing developments, and the overall delay in supply drives up housing costs for everybody. In some cases, it makes it simply infeasible to build, even projects with HPD support. We're proposing to make it easier to build housing in New York City with a streamlined environmental review. Environmental review is important, and we needed to identify and mitigate potential significant impacts. But we looked at the last 10 years of projects and found that smaller projects consistently have no environmental impact at all. It means that many projects are being forced to go through lengthy and expensive review, even though there is a clear track record of not having negative environmental impact. It serves no environmental purpose, and it's making it harder to build the housing we need by the climate crisis and the housing crisis. Now, I will briefly review some background on the existing environmental review process before I introduce the proposal. As you know, there are three different types of actions in City Environmental Quality Review, SEACR, Type 1, Type 2, and Unlisted Actions. Type 1 actions are defined by the state and the city and require some environmental review because they may result in adverse impacts. They may or may not require a full environmental impact statement. Type 2 actions are defined by the state and local agencies and are those that categorically do not result in adverse impacts. They do not require environmental. Unlisted actions are those that do not fall into either bucket, and they are typically smaller than Type 1 actions, but also may or may not require a full environmental impact statement. Actions facilitating development projects require environmental review when discretionary approvals or permits are required from a city agency to facilitate the development. The proposal requires city funding, or the proposal is being directly undertaken by a city agency. A secret process for a Type 1 or unlisted action is very complex and time-intensive. An unlisted action typically takes from two to three years to get through pre-certification, which includes an environmental review, while larger Type 1 actions often have faster timelines because they often involve agency-backed priority initiatives. State regulations, which create the framework for SEACR at the city level, authorize city agencies to adopt their own Type 2 actions in addition to the state list. To include an action on an agency Type 2 list, the agency must establish that its action will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment under the criteria established by the state and that its action is not a Type 1 action as defined by state regulations. Our proposal is to update the city list to allow for more Type 2 actions, a new Green Fast Track for environmental review. This proposal will create a streamlined path for small and medium-sized housing projects in New York City. It would increase predictability, as well as time and cost savings for these projects, while maintaining the existing public review process. Qualifying for a Type 2 pathway could cut the existing approvals timeline by more than half. This would eliminate a barrier to development of small and medium-sized apartment buildings, including affordable housing, and reduce waiting times for other projects that do need to undergo environmental review. Now, we will discuss the details of the Green Fast Track proposal. This Type 2 pathway would only apply to projects that have a proven track record of no environmental impacts. DCP and partner agencies reviewed more than 1,100 projects with applications completed between January 2013 and May 2023 to determine which types of projects result in no impacts, the parameters that define those projects, and what other conditions projects would need to meet to preclude the possibility of impacts. The result is a proposed set of rules that define Green Fast Track eligibility that is supported by 10 years of projects that underwent environmental review. If projects satisfy all of these requirements, they would qualify for the Fast Track and proceed directly to public review when their land use application is complete. The public would still have the opportunity to participate in community board, Borough President, City Planning Commission, and City Council review for Type 2 projects as required by the New York City Charter. In our review of past projects, we found that the most common environmental issues identified in review are either density-related or site-specific. Density-related issues are those due to the proposed size of the development in relation to its environment. These most often include issues related to transportation, community facilities, and construction. To avoid projects with the potential for density-related significant adverse impacts, the size of projects eligible for the Fast Track had to be limited. Site-specific issues are those that stem from the development's location or context, no matter the proposed project. These most often include issues related to air quality, historic resources, soil conditions, noise, and resiliency. These issues are typically dealt with in the environmental review process by integrating components or commitments into the project, such as E-designations, archaeological or architectural documentation and commitments, all electric energy consumption, and more. These types of components enable projects to avoid impacts and receive negative declarations. The proposal would enable small to medium apartment buildings across the city to access the Green Fast Track. The first set of criteria provide different size thresholds depending on the zoning district the proposed project is located in. For projects originating in R5 to R10 zoning districts or commercial or manufacturing districts, the threshold for eligibility would be a housing unit increment between 1 and 250 units and up to 35,000 gross square feet of non-residential uses, such as doctor's offices or retail. Of this total non-residential area, a maximum of 25,000 gross square feet could be used for commercial, and 25,000 gross square feet could be used for community facility. Projects originating in commercial or manufacturing districts would only be eligible if developed with a regulatory agreement or the lease with a government agency to develop housing, or a decision by the BSA to authorize residential development. This would ensure that applicants could not use this path to develop something other than housing in these districts. For projects originating in R1 through R4 districts, the increment would be lower, and only projects with up to 175 units and up to 20,000 gross square feet of non-residential uses would qualify. There would also be a limit of 10,000 gross square feet of commercial and 10,000 gross square feet of community facility use. The Fast Track would support our kind goals, requiring buildings that use this path to forego fossil fuels and commit to electric heating, cooling, and hot water. This would avoid any air quality issues resulting from the new buildings. The Fast Track would also exclude projects located within special coastal risk districts. The Fast Track would also promote environmental justice by excluding projects near polluting sources. Projects adjacent to arterial highways or affected by sources of air pollution would not be eligible. It would also require buildings to meet health and safety standards if they were built in areas with high ambient noise, or to remediate if there are hazardous materials on site, with required documentation of site assessments included. Projects could also satisfy these requirements by establishing that there are no air quality, noise, or soil issues, or by agreeing to an E-designation, as they often do now. These important environmental safeguards are some of the most common protections that result from the environmental review process and would remain part of the Green Fast Track. The Green Fast Track would also preserve safeguards to important elements of neighborhood character. It would preserve mechanisms for oversight from the Landmarks Preservation Commission with regards to historic resources, including architectural and archaeological documentation and construction protection if necessary. The Fast Track would also exclude projects that are more than 250 feet tall and more than 50 feet tall and directly adjacent to an open space natural resource or historic resource that is sunlight-sensitive. Additionally, a project would not be eligible if it contains a natural resource. Projects would need to also have a less than 24-month anticipated construction period to qualify. If projects meet these criteria and commit to the various safeguards described, then they would qualify for the Green Fast Track and be exempt from environmental review. They would provide succinct and accessible documentation of eligibility and commitments and proceed with the public review process. If these rules had been in effect 10 years ago, approximately 12,000 new housing units could have been built more quickly and efficiently. This map shows that the land area that would be potentially eligible based on the criteria described. In some of these gray areas, applicants would need to commit to noise or air quality protections to be eligible. Here are some examples of the scale and types of projects that may have qualified, based solely on location and size. These projects range from having 33 to 160 income-restricted or supportive housing units. At the same time, they required environmental review, but their reviews did not result in any environmental impacts. So how would this be implemented? As discussed previously, agencies have the ability to adopt their own Type 2 goals. City Planning has been working on this expansion of rules that define which projects are eligible for the Green Fast Track. We have been in close coordination with our partner agencies that facilitate housing and that are proposing the same rulemaking at the Board of Standards and Appeals, the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, and the Mayor's Office of Environmental Coordination to make sure that all rulemakings are in alignment. The process that the city uses to adopt these rules is the City Administrative Procedure Act, or CAPA. The City Planning Commission will begin the CAPA process by publishing the legal text of the proposed rule and a supporting statement in the city record. These materials will also be posted to DCP's website within the EAS. We are asking for your approval to take this first step. The public would then be asked to comment on the proposed rules to influence how they are finally drafted. This would include a public hearing before the commission. After the hearing and an opportunity to consider any comments, the commission would go on the final rule. If approved, the final rule would become effective after it is published again. We are developing tools to help applicant and DCP teams identify eligible proposals as early as possible. Some criteria are geographically based and easily verified, while some require confirmation of the proposed actions and determination of the development increment. Some may also require sign-ups from other agencies such as LPC and DEP. These tools and procedures would be available, and the staff would be trained before the rule is applied. In conclusion, this proposal promotes environmental efficiency and equitable development, addressing the city's housing needs across our communities. Potential environmental concerns will be addressed through eligibility criteria and commitment strategies. Environmental protections remain a priority. This proposal contributes to economic development, job creation, and housing growth. The proposed changes are based on research and benefit both residents in the city. This proposal does not impact the public review process that projects must go through for zoning changes, special permits, and more. Public review would remain robust. Thank you, and the team is here to answer questions.
Great. Thank you, Alex. And let me just congratulate you and the team for putting this together. I think it's just been widely recognized for everybody who's been a part of it, the amazing work that you will have done in a very short period of time to put this together. And so I want to thank you. Let me just start with a few basic questions, and I'll go to my colleagues here. The first is, you noted the three different types of actions, Type 1, Type 2, and Unlisted. Since we're focusing on Type 2 here, give us a sense of what the most typical Type 2-type projects are that we see today.
Thank you. I believe there are actions that facilitate between 1 and 4 housing units that are eligible for Type 2 today and other ministerial actions as well.
So 1 and 4, so really small would be eligible.
Really small, as well as some types of actions that do not result in big increments require waivers.
So is it fair to say that the way in which our agency and other agencies believe that we can include more units of housing into this list is because of the various exclusions and limitations that you place? Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
So, for example, it has to be fully electric?
Yes.
It has to be outside of special coastal risk districts? With a limitation on height? Completed quickly, or at least quicker than what other projects might be?
Yes, only within 24 months.
Okay, so let me, and I know there are other things here too with LPC review, et cetera. One of the ones that I just wanted to probe a little bit more on is about the proximity to resources that are sunlight-sensitive, because that also is an exclusion. So you can't be part of this if you are near a resource which is sunlight-sensitive. Can you say a little bit more about what that looks like here, what that means?
Sure. A project would not be eligible if it were substantially contiguous to a sunlight-sensitive resource. That means that it has to be next to or directly across the street from such a resource. LPC would play a part in determining if historic resources are sunlight-sensitive. Yeah.
So a satellite-sensitive resource?
Yeah.
I think most of us would immediately think parks.
Yes.
That would count.
Yes.
But it also sounds like we, in the context of landmark, there might be other examples too.
It is typically an environmental review, a landmark church building with stained glass in the church, because a condition of shadows might affect someone's ability to enjoy the historic nature of that resource.
Okay, and if this rule were to be adopted, and there would be more types of residential buildings eligible to take advantage of a little bit more speed in this process? You noted that there was a process for them to certify that they had met the eligibility criteria. Can you say a little bit about, a little bit more about that? What they complete, how they present that information, and who reviews it and comes to the conclusion that they are or are not correct in their assessment of what they are proposing to do?
Yes, so ultimately, a Type 2 memo would need to be provided. This would have to include documentation of all of these commitments, as well as how the project meets the eligibility criteria. And this would need to be signed off by the lead agency, in DCP's case, EARD. So EARD would play a role still in establishing the reasonable worst-case development scenario with the applicant through a similar process as they do today, and agreeing that the proposal is reasonable and likely to be facilitated by the proposed actions. That Type 2 memo is something that is provided today, but it would be much more robust in the future with this proposal.
Okay, so you provide the Type 2 memo, lead agency reviews, signs off on it, and then that is the, the next step for you would be to, what would be your next step as a developer there?
You would still need to complete your land use application, if you have one. And then with your Type 2 memo on your land use application supporting documents, you would certify it to be work.
Okay, great. And the last question for me is a process where you delineated what is happening here. It's a little unusual for us to kick off a rulemaking process at the City Planning Commission, but at the end of our colloquy and the answers of questions here, I'm going to ask the commission for a vote. The vote is to start the rulemaking process, so it really is to advance this conversation into the public discourse. Is that correct?
Yes, it would allow us to publish the rule and notify all parties that need to be.
And it would be coming back to us at a later date for actual evaluation?
Yes, so first there would be a public hearing. After notification of all the entities, we are also hoping to have an info session before the public hearing. And then, yes, the commission would vote.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Chair. Alex, thank you. Good presentation. Could we go to the slide where it indicated where a project must have a track record, I believe, was the language? Yeah, proven track record of no environmental impact. So since a project, a new project wouldn't have a track record.
Right.
So you're talking about the area of development previously has yielded only negative impacts? Just clarify that.
Sure, so when we say this, we are talking historically. So with the 1,100 projects that have been reviewed, we established criteria at the level, right, at the thresholds where projects did not have environmental impacts. Some of these projects had commitments or components integrated to achieve a negative declaration, and those were also taken into account in our eligibility criteria.
So an applicant in one of those areas then must, as a part of their application, must have this data? Am I right?
The.
The onus is on the applicant, right, to?
The onus is on the applicant to prove that they need the eligibility criteria that we've established. And if they need that criteria, then they're eligible for the Type 2 pathway. But the criteria is based on historical review of all the projects that have happened in the past 10 years and in order to identify the conditions and the characteristics of those projects that consistently have no environmental impact.
Right, so does the applicant have to come up with that data? Or does the applicant essentially make the application and then the department verifies?
Exactly.
So what happens?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Hi, everyone. Stephanie Shulow, Director of Environmental Review here at City Planning. Just to provide maybe an example to help illustrate this, many of the projects that we looked at required an archaeological sensitivity or investigation to avoid archaeological impacts, even though they were far smaller than the 250 units. So that was a site-specific example of something that could have resulted in impacts were these components not addressed. could have resulted in impacts were these components not addressed through the environmental review. So what we did, that's one of the criteria that Alex mentioned, is that they're they have to prove via consultation with LPC that the area is not archaeologically sensitive. So that historical lookback provided us with a data source that says, you know, this is a sensitivity that we need to be aware of and avoid in order for these projects to be type-two.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Golds.
Thank you. Good presentation, super informative. Just a couple of small points, Paul, you've mentioned, it's about twelve thousand units over the years. That would have gotten the market presumably faster. And so when you look at that number, those are units that presumably the the process, the EAS, just slowed down a few, it didn't actually impact. Two questions, one, what do we think the time, basically, how much faster could this be? I've heard numbers of eight to twelve months, is that is that a good number for what, you know, have the difference we've been making?
Yes, yes, we we would agree with that. We, you know, on average, projects take two to three years in pre-certification. So essentially to get agreement on the environmental review, and we think we would be reducing that by more than half.
Got it, wow, wow, and and then one other, I guess it's hard to estimate because some of the costs, aside from the cost of actually doing the environmental review, is the cost of, you know, carrying people, the time that it takes for that whoever's building it to actually carry the property while it's empty. But do we have an estimate also for how much, you know, that extra year adds to to the process?
Yes, we think it is about an average of a hundred thousand dollars between consulting fees and attorney fees on the environment.
Got it, got it, so this could be pretty significant, both the time savings, dollars encouraging building. That's perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Shulo, followed by Commissioners Goodrich and Reprochet.
So, so just, I'm, I quick follow-up to the Vice Chair's question. So it's not so much that the project itself has the track record, but that there is now a review based upon the history that is more categorical about the project, that they can be compared against previous projects.
Correct, okay.
A question on the slide fifteen, wait, well, it's it's a little grouping of slides that started at fifteen, which has to do with sort of the R-one to four category, and they are five to ten.
Sure.
So, and this can just be, in in interprets my interpretation of how I'm reading this, and I realize that some of these type-twos are very small, it could be one house, I've seen them a million times, so there's the R-one. But when we refer to an increment of one hundred and seventy-five units for R-one through R-four district, I realize we're trying to capture bigger, but smaller projects in these districts, but are, how would an R-one district ever have a project that could have that many units in it?
Yes, it would be, it would be very rare. What we're saying is if a if a project proposes to build a large development in a low-density district, that that is not rational, right? That that is not an environmental review issue, but a land use review issue. So the commission and the public will still need to review the rationality of the proposal and exercise its discretion. But historically, projects with below one hundred and seventy-five units in R-one through R-four districts, if they meet all of the other criteria as well, do not result in adverse environmental impacts.
So so the example of this kind of development would be, which I we I've seen many times, this would be sort of a a development of one family homes on a site or connected townhouse-like homes, which we've seen a lot of.
It could be, and it's important to note, this is the district that it originates in the project. So an applicant could come in proposing and upsumming, right? They could propose a rezoning to a higher district that might facilitate a a higher number of units than in R-one district.
Right, I I'm just trying to connect the zoning to the environmental review, because it it sounds like you could potentially, there would be a proposal for one hundred and seventy-five units in an R-one, and they could potentially be type-two when that wouldn't necessarily be consistent with the zone, underlying zoning. So I just want to make sure there's no gap in here somewhere. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and and you know, we believe a project such as that would still need to be reviewed through land use reviewing, commission review, for its rationality.
Right.
But it wouldn't, but it wouldn't have community facility impacts, it wouldn't have open space impacts, et cetera.
Okay, and it's possible that it wouldn't need environmental review also.
Right.
They start its type to status.
Correct.
Okay, that's interesting. Okay, I appreciate that. The last thing is this, this is about agency coordination. So different agencies are permitted to have their own type-two criteria. And here we are today, doing what we can do to help expedite and speed this process, lots of savings, great for applicants, but yet the community still ends up being engaged in discussion. How are we ensuring that all the other agencies that can create their own criteria are doing it consistently with us, so that while they may get through our checklist, and we've created a new category, they get trapped in another agency's category that isn't recognizing the same things that we would like to recognize as being not significant?
Yes, so all agencies that facilitate housing will be making these same rulemaking. They will also be adopting the existing DCP type-two list as applicable. So all type-two rules will be in alignment.
Does the, is anything changing about the underlying authority that an agency can make their own criteria? Are we taking that away or locking it up so that the day after everyone is in agreement? Let's say in this administration, that the next administration has a different point of view, but the authority still exists for them to change it and undermines this progress?
Any additional rulemaking would require another half of process.
Would have to go back to.
Yes.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. The way I think about that, one hundred and seventy-five unit building in R-one, just it just can't be, it wouldn't exist, it's just not possible from a land use perspective. So it's really, you know, when the agency says, well, we're not going to require, we're not going to, we're going to put that type of a thing on the type-two list, it means to say, well, if such a thing were feasible, which it is not, and it meets all of the criteria, well, in that situation, it would not need a special environmental review. But we all know that you cannot do a one hundred and seventy-five unit building in R-one. So it is functionally not actually relevant. So I I just want to make that point, you are you are right to to focus on that, it just happens to be covering all of the districts.
Correct.
But it wouldn't actually be applicable, because you would not have that proposal through R-one.
In R-one, as a building, would that apply if it was a development site? A residential development of one hundred and seventy-five units? A townhouse, townhouse development, we see, we just saw one out on the South Shore. A Coal Street was an example of one. So, I'm just wondering, is that where this would apply in an R-one, or still not?
So the the proposed rule is agnostic about the actual action type. It could be a special permit or rezoning and authorization for for a Staten Island special district. So a larger tract of land that was seeking CPC authorization or others for development of a larger parcel with single-family or or detached homes could be eligible if it meets all these other criteria. One of the things that comes up on Staten Island, as you know, is is natural resources and things where there is the criteria that the site cannot contain a natural resource. So many of those might be excluded from eligibility for that reason, as well as they would need to meet all of the other eligibility criteria. But so there's another example where it's not just the one building, it's the full, the full increment of the proposed action.
Understood.
It could be one building, it could be many.
Thank you, and just to clarify that for me, so in an example where you were able to find a space for one hundred and seventy-four single-family houses in Staten Island, potentially, in R-one, this could be potentially exempt under this change, but to your point, Stephanie, proximity to natural resource and all the other things might actually kick it out again. But that would be the example, not one hundred and seventy-five units in a building, but a proposal that created around one hundred and seventy-five perhaps, perhaps, single-family homes in R-one, that would be the example where it would be applicable in R-one. Okay, all right, Commissioner, Commissioner Goodrich.
Hi, great presentation, thank you so much. I have two questions, or maybe one in a concern. My first question is, is there any exemption or any sort of loophole for unit for projects that have more than two hundred and fifty units to be eligible for it? So I'm asking because I saw a statement a couple of months ago by the city saying that it could go up to a thousand or something to that effect, so is it, is there a mechanism where it is just two hundred and fifty and less?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then my second question, I've gotten this question quite a bit actually about school size. And for example, when the project comes through and it's large and it'll likely bring more children and how the area might not have, the the existing schools might not have enough seats for students, you know, for the new families. I was really surprised to learn when I researched that that would actually be in the environmental review. And when I think about it, two hundred and fifty units is actually not a small or even, I mean, that's pretty, three up to a thousand new people. So my question is twofold, which is, where would I, what what other mechanism, if possible, other than the implementative review, would be able to give people answers about that? And then the second part of that would be transit. I wanted to ask about this, a slide where you talk about how it would be in less transit-rich areas. But the, so it's it's a twofold question, the one about school size, and then the, which, you know, I'll just note, I was really surprised to learn how expensive environmental because I think some people think it's just, you know, and other things, and it actually is a lot of quality-of-life issues, so school size.
Yes, so the projects reviewed in the ten-year lookback took into account background growth and, you know, many small projects happening within the same area. But environmental review is not a substitute for this larger need for capital planning. It only looks at the change from the proposed project in on its surroundings, and what we found is that projects under two hundred and fifty units do not have a schools or a childcare impact. They're just too small to saddle with the costs of providing school seats or providing daycare slots. Larger projects, such as small-area rezonings, would not qualify for this if they do not meet that two hundred and fifty-unit threshold and would still type the type-two pathway if if they are not up to two hundred and fifty units. And they would still require an EAS to assess issues such as community facilities and and school needs. So that might include small-area rezonings or or other things of that nature.
So just to clarify, even if they are exempt from environmental review, they might still have another type of review where they would address school size? These projects, or no?
No, they would they would be captured within the SCA's area of planning efforts, so what we do at DCP is we collaborate with other agencies to make sure they have the information they need to facilitate capital planning. So, for example, DCP provides the SCA, the Schools Construction Authority, with advanced demographic projections that take into account all projects coming through agencies that need approvals, so that they can integrate them into their planning efforts for school capacity. And that would be the process that this happens under, as it does today, right? Projects of this size do not have adverse community facilities impacts. And and therefore, you know, the introduction of of children and students from those projects would would be captured through SCA's more district-scale planning.
Thank you, and then one last question. Even without the environment or with or without, a lot of there act, there is, tends to be a lot of litigation. I might actually know this question myself, but I'm actually wondering, there's, you know, there's Elizabeth Street Gardens, and there was a lot of background in, like, California about how this came about, and I guess I'm also wondering if, even with the fast track, if you know, the fact there's that, I mean, it's still be slowed down, right? Do we have any data and how many of the 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 lawsuits that are brought because of environmental review? How many of those are successful against the environmental review? Thank you. We actually, I mean, we we haven't been keeping statistics, so this is my my memory, we are generally successful in environmental review litigation, and we have been occasionally have lost it at trial court and you know, we have more often than not, you know, we have that reverse on field. And so, and in part because we do very thorough environmental reviews, and we also are pretty, you know, we are clear that what we're doing, that we're documenting that what we do. So here, you know, I think the documentation supports what we're proposing here is very robust. And then when someone comes to us in the future and says, I am type-two, I meet these criteria, you will have documentation that establishes this fact, it's reasonable, all the assumptions and yes, we get, we do get sued, but we jump in. Do the lawsuits end up, they end up slowing down the project? And that. They can, and that's a real problem with litigation. Often, particularly private projects and financing becomes an issue when there's litigation. With city projects, it's less about financing and you know, sometimes more if there's a decision at the trial court that you're first, that process. Because I was, I was wondering if, you know, the goal, the goal is to fast-track it, and I completely understand it, there are some, you know, obviously, some people refuse the system. But I was wondering if in in if if it may play out that people might just do and it ends up taking as much time as it's possible. Yeah, it it'll, it'll be interesting to see how it plays out when you're the litigation, if people want to challenge something, will largely have to be about something other than environmental review, because if you're type-two, it's it's really a checklist, do you meet these criteria, and some criteria are you know, support that needs to be done, but it's largely a checklist, and so if you meet them, you make them, and it's going to be difficult to bring a challenge. Thank you, always good to show you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Reprochet.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Just have three questions, just for points of clarification. The first one is, with the process of construction, twenty-four months, does that mean the final CFO or final construction sign-off? And is there a mechanism in place for this agency to track that twenty-four-month period?
So the anticipated construction period is something that DCP and other lead agencies check currently. You need, as part of your analysis framework, to establish the build year and provide rationale for that build year as to how. as to how you'll reach it and what the construction period will be. Um, and DCP has set timeframes for certain sized buildings that they agree with is a reasonable construction period to assume. So of course, if you would see that, you wouldn't be eligible. Um, and, and construction period impacts, there, there has not been a project in the past ten years that had um, a less than twenty-four-month anticipated construction period that identified construction impacts. Um, but again, that is, that is an analysis framework, right? We have to establish that in order to um assess the project and, and that is, that is as far as it, as it goes.
Okay. Uh, my second question is regards to tools and development. How, how much longer does the agency need to develop that? Where do you find it?
Yeah, so we're, we're working on these. We've been, we've been working furiously on the rule and the EAS for the rule. Um, but you know, these are checks that, that applicants often do as part of environmental review. Environmental consultants are very familiar with many of these checks. They're either in the reasonable worst-case development scenario already or as part of an EAS typically. Um, but we will be, we are hoping to provide more and more automated process where we can, such as online maps that identify with your location if you are locationally eligible. Um, as well as, as a, as a checklist with guidance to say, okay, how do you how do you get the approvals that you need from L C or G P? So.
Those are going to be my next question. In terms of this, the lead agency review, and this is a fast-track system, how long is the review from the agency? Is it a week, two weeks, a month? Is that, you have a projection of what that is? And is there, once again, a mechanism in place for the applicant to track when they follow with you guys? For example, Department of Buildings has DOB now, even though that system was a disaster when it first came out. It's starting to make some sense now where the applicant, the owner, everyone was able to track it. They get a notification. And it's pretty clear. Is that something that the agency is thinking about implementing for this process?
So there, so there is currently an internal applicant portal of, of form of staff that is internal. Um, where applicants can track milestones and submissions and all of that. And it would be, it would be integrated into Zach in some form um eventually. Um, and your first question was more about
Well, with regards to what you're saying, I understand the ZAP. But I'm only using DOB's reference because I've utilized that tool many times. If there's an issue that comes up, an objection is raised, you're notified, they say, listen, you're missing something or
Yeah.
Please provide. Is that what you guys are thinking about? So I'm just trying to have an understanding, even for those watching.
Right.
They're like, they're about this, this makes it an easier process.
Yeah, we think that there will be both something that is accessible outside of Zach. So that as early as possible, even before you've come in and talked to the agency about your development scenario and your actions, that you could start to identify your locationally eligible and see the commitments that you would have to proceed with early on in order to be eligible. Um, and then right, there would be some integration into Zach to, to verify that. And it would be similar to the reasonable worst-case development scenario process today and other processes where there is, there is verification happening by the lead agency. Sorry.
No, I'll just say that um today, someone on my team, a project manager, is responsible for kind of shepherding the projects through the environmental review. So we're anticipating still continuing to assign staff to these projects to confirm the eligibility criteria are met and that they would go through this, um, you know, the steps of this pathway. So we still anticipate having a point person in environmental review that would be able to uh, you know, communicate with applicant teams and make sure that they're um, providing all the information that we need from them to, to make sure that they're eligible.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Cromani, followed by Commissioner Osorio, Bozor, and Murray.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Um, my question is a little bit related to Commissioner Sorillo and Commissioner Bolt's question, which is um, do we know or do you know what neighborhoods historically have been affected by limit by not having the type two? So of the units that were not able to be developed, do we know where?
That's a really good question. We can go back and look at the data and get you a clearer answer.
Great. Thank you. I would appreciate that because it's the, it's the inverse. Do we, do we know what neighborhoods would benefit most from this?
Yes.
That, should I be interested in that? And then, sorry, one, one other question is in terms of the um the public involvement um beyond a public review um session, um are there other anticipated activities that the department would undertake? Uh, it's so dense. Um, how, how do we get the public to even to want to know about this and then engage them?
Yeah, so Kappa has certain requirements for outreach um ahead of the public hearing, including sending the rule to many parties. Um, the EAS has to be made available. Um, we are also hoping to post a virtual recording of the presentation um and to do a public info session ahead of the public hearing. Um, and this is, you know, largely to help get community boards understanding the rule. So we will be sending um, a bunch of materials out to our uh borough offices. Um, prepping borough planners for, for any questions they might receive, having them help direct to the public hearing and to the materials that are available. Um, and, and trying to do outreach and that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Thanks much for the briefings. Pretty useful. Um, I just wanted to highlight a couple quick follow-up questions to both of what my colleagues have asked and some of the questions that we started discussing. First one is just to, to, to build on Commissioner Carmine's question. The Kappa rule establishes a minimum of sixty days, but that could be a expanded? Would, could it be expanded, especially given the fact that we have the holidays? Folks are reviewing studio yes for economic opportunities and may start reviewing housing opportunities soon. Is there some flexibility in terms of providing a little more time for people to have enough time to review?
I believe that Kappa establishes minimum periods, but there is flexibility.
Okay, cool. Thank you. The other question is um associated with um sort of like the uh resources that would be safe, right? Like this big, sort of like objective to when I maximize efficiency in the review process to to a safe resources time, et cetera. How would you summarize the type of total benefit that we could be getting, that we would be creating with something like this? And, and I specifically would like to ask, why are we including affordable housing but not specifically focusing on it? In other words, in my mind, this would have made it more sense if we actually sort of require the housing that will be built to be a hundred percent affordable.
Sure. Thank you for your question. Um, the proposed amendment aims to expedite the timeline prior to public review and thus the development process overall. Um, which includes many affordable housing initiatives. So by reducing the time and costs associated with environmental reviews, DCP anticipates a positive impact on housing affordability, making it more feasible to deliver affordable housing units in a timely manner. Um, furthermore, any delays in bringing any type of housing supply.
Testing, testing. This is my new microphone.
I can hear it.
I can hear it.
I can hear your test.
I can hear your test.
Should I continue?
Okay, let's just pick up where we left off. Mr. Osorio, why don't you back to questions? Or I know you were midstream, but I go back to you, to where you're at and wherever you want to take the conversation.
So. What was on any housing that is not?
So. So I, what I want to underscore is that nowadays, the commission only reviews a housing that has a, that includes an NIH component. And then eliminating projects that include a mix or only market rate would make this, you know, proposal much less effective. There would not be, if we only included 100% affordable housing developments, the rule would be much less impactful.
Oh, that's what can be then.
So currently, the universe of housing projects that goes through, that goes through environmental review is HPD projects that always include some components. DCP projects that now the majority includes some component of affordable housing. And then BSA projects that include variances, really, to facilitate housing. We, we believe that all of these types of housing projects should be eligible for type two.
About two or three.
Yeah. There is one more thing I would like to add, if that's okay. The, for the basis of this rulemaking, it is focused on environmental review standards. So the state allows us to implement restrictions only to avoid adverse impacts as analyzed under state SECR. So in the case of affordable housing projects, affordable units are almost always assessed the same way that market rate units are. The exception is that affordable units sometimes have the possibility of having more impacts than market rate units when it comes to issues such as childcare.
We also. So understood. Probably a total of them. Probably no.
Thank you. So. The case is that with this size of a project, they, even if capacities are over 100% in a district and there's pressures on a district, they would not themselves cause a significant change to those capacities. There, there are too few units for them to have, you know, to create 100, over 100 students or have a 5% change as many of the thresholds identify per SECR.
Well, I'm thinking what is everywhere where this is happening. Showed on that whole area city. They will allow them to. Essentially have.
Yes.
We don't know.
Yeah.
You know, how would we. Where they're looking at.
When actions are, you know, when actions would facilitate the development of a lot of small projects happening within the same area, the, the result of those actions would have to be taken into account collectively. So such as the, the city of Yes For Housing opportunities, they would have to evaluate in, you know, more, not, not developments in isolation, but developments that occur in the same place, right? That would still occur under environmental review. Same with neighborhood rezonings would still require environmental review if, if actions would enable more than 250 units in an area. But, you know, what we're saying is that projects that have fewer than 250 units, they have not historically had environmental impacts, no matter their surrounding context. And, and we would expect that they would continue to not have environmental.
If I'm not. If then 250. The one and another one. Would be. Need more projects. Potentially.
That's how SECR works today, right? And, and some people think that's a, that's a concern because each project is looking at what is the incremental effect of their specific action, if that's layered on to existing capacity constraints or otherwise. But it really is in isolation. How does this specific action facilitate development beyond what's permitted as of right? So it is a limitation of environmental review overall, so that's unchanged by this proposed rulemaking. So I believe community gardens would be considered in terms of sunlight sensitive resources, but natural resources are typically resources such as wetlands, streams, forests, natural resources that are protected by DEC, the State Department of.
Okay, what I think. So. If you clarify. Areas of like. Water area that will. Would have come here.
So to start with aspects of the coastal zone and the waterfront revitalization program. As you said, special coastal risk districts would not be eligible. Those are locations in Staten Island, Brooklyn and Queens, and they are very local. But they are, you know, as determined by previous actions, some of the most vulnerable areas in New York City to flooding. And that is why they have been excluded from potential to access. We did a WRP review as part of the EAS for, for this proposal. And for projects under 250 units in our lookback period, we determined that there is very limited potential for the WRP to influence these projects due to their size. The existing regulations and policies surrounding resiliency in natural resources, including the building code, the DEP Unified Stormwater Rule, natural resources protections and regulations that already exist, as well as more advanced guidelines that HPD requires as part of all of their projects. We found that projects that would qualify would not have the potential to, for WRP related public policy.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, Commissioner, Michael Morella. I'm the Director of Climate and Sustainability Planning here at City Planning. Just to jump in on your question, which I absolutely appreciate, Commissioner Osorio. It's a question in part, certainly has to be about what does environmental review contribute to the questions of resilience? And the environmental, whether or not a project is a type, an uplifted action or a type two is the distinction of whether or not it has to prepare the EAS. And the, that is not directly tied to the questions of resiliency that you posed. Waterfront revitalization program has a more direct tie insofar as that those projects get reviewed for policies to be, projects to be reviewed for consistency with policies of the WRP, which do tie to climate. As Alex had mentioned, in our lookback though, in the, over the course of 10 years, we had roughly three, excuse me, 2,000 projects that went through a WRP review, 2,000. Only 31 of those would qualify, would have qualified for this fast track. 30 out of 2,000. Of those 30, 20 of those projects were HPD, which is important to note because HPD now as a requirement of their projects have even heightened resiliency standards that go, that use the WRP analysis as the basis for that calculation, but even exceed that. And so of the 30, two-thirds roughly have, would have exceeded the WRP standards. So of the remaining 11, only six were DCP projects, one was EDC, and a few were BSA. So we're talking about a relatively small handful. And the question is, what is the effectiveness of the WRP in, in making those changes? One thing I would pose is that when it comes to the question of the wisdom of a land use action, that still rests in the hands of the CTC. So it's not about the specifics of the design necessarily, but it's a question about increasing densities in sensitive areas. That's even with or without a EAS or with or without a WRP analysis, that still lies within your hands, even for those projects under 250.
Appreciate. Thank you. I wonder why are we. So, what were you in? And are you building?
Um, thank you. That's a, that's a great question. So, you know, going back to what I was saying before, we have to implement our restrictions on projects based on what, what we can do to avoid adverse impacts under state SECR. So for example, projects that commit to electric, heating and hot water nowadays do not have significant adverse air quality impacts on the buildings that surround them. So that is, that is how it's set. However, I think I'll add that, you know, there, there is public policy that is being implemented to, in order to push further on commitments that new buildings have to have. The, you know, nat- natural, the elimination of natural gas stoves is one of them. And, and we think that these are moving in a, in a really good direction, especially with the recent approval of City of Gas for. Incentivized to be.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move on to Commissioner Bozart.
With the length of time. And the second question is, within that review, let's say they, they do highlight the idea that they get kicked out of the fast track or that the.
Thank you. Yes, so LPC review of, of proposed sites is something that happens under the process today. We have been in coordination with LPC for the proposed rule and they think this type of review that is required to meet eligibility criteria could, could take less than a week. Could be very quick. In terms of projects then complying, if they do have an archaeological issue or they do have a resource onsite that they would be affecting, they would have to get sign off from LPC, the same way that they do now, through a certificate of appropriateness, through sign off of their archaeological documentation and their, their plan to mitigate any, any issues that LPC has identified.
And with that, that's all we got for today. So thank you very much, Alex. And I express my appreciation to you and. Several amount of work and agree. So now, this is the time we vote to activate the process to start, to start the rulemaking process by publishing the appropriate places. I will seek a set by a voice vote to start the type of rulemaking process. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
They pose a aye. Okay, we will proceed again. Thank you very much, Alex. Hey Sarah, let's go to the next.
Final item on our agenda is a certification of a city-owned property in Queen, Queen District 11. Our Commissioner is Trishy Bajrastra.
So Trishy.
Good morning. Chair Gladney, can the Commissioner? Next slide. So this is an application by the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services to facilitate the disposition of four small surplus city-owned properties in Douglasston, Little Lake, Community District 11, Queens pursuant to zoning. The sites include 253-19 Pembroke Avenue, Lot 8260, Lot 226, Lot 8136, Lot 129 and 74, and Lot 81A5, Lot 58. These sites are deemed surplus properties because of their small area and free furniture. They cannot be used to fulfill any agency need as they are sliver lots which are not suitable for development in their own right. DECAS defines a sliver lot as any lot which either is less than 10 feet wide in either dimension or contains an area smaller than 1,000 square feet. The project sites depicted by pink dotted lines in the map are located at the northeast edge of Community District 11, with three of the disposition sites located two to three blocks to the south of Napa County border, and the fourth disposition site located four blocks east of Alley Pond, Pond Park. Next slide, please. Just to give a quick overview of the surrounding landscape, land uses, disposition site one, Lot 226, depicted by a red dotted line, is located within an R31 district with an active C12 commercial overlay which runs along the Northern Bolivar Commercial Corridor. The commercial corridor includes restaurants, banks, doctors' offices and other local retail establishments. Next slide, please. In the map here, the disposition site depicted by the pink dotted line with purple shade encompasses Lot 226 of Lot 8260. It is a regularly shaped 1,624 square feet of lot that extends the width of the block between Northern Bolivar and Pembroke Avenue. It has approximately seven feet of lot width and is a fully paved area that is being used as a sidewalk, providing connection to Northern Bolivar, Pembroke Avenue and an interior parking lot on the adjacent Lot 11. There is an access easement on the adjacent Lot 11 for driveway use by all private butters to the city property that predates the city's acquisition. The disposition site has a frontage of seven feet of Northern Bolivar and Pembroke Avenue and a depth of 205 feet. Next slide, please. The image on the screen is showing the street view of the Northern Bolivar Commercial Corridor facing southeast from the intersection of Northern Bolivar and Westmoreland Street. We can see Site One depicted by the pink dotted line to the far right of the image next to a yellow building which is an active restaurant. Next slide, please. The image on the screen is showing a closer view of the street furniture of disposition site one facing southeast from Northern Bolivar. As mentioned earlier, the lot is located next to an active restaurant called El Paco. Currently serving as an accessway from Northern Bolivar to Pembroke Avenue and was utilized as an outdoor dining in 2020. Next slide, please. This image is showing the view of the street furniture of Site One facing northwest from Pembroke Avenue depicted by pink dotted line on the image. Next slide, please. And the disposition sites two and three, as shown by dotted red lines, are located in low, low-density residential districts where there is a mix of single-family, two-family and small multifamily buildings. Next slide, please. In the map here, the disposition sites depicted by the pink dotted lines are located on Block 8136, which is bounded by 40th Avenue to the northwest, Westmoreland Street to the north-east, 41st Drive to the southeast and Little Lake Parkway to the southwest. And Site Two, which is Lot 129, is a regularly shaped interior lot encompassing only 310 square feet of lot area and has approximately one foot of lot width. Part of this lot is within 41 Road by the Way, which is mapped from Westmoreland Street to Little Lake Parkway, but is only built up until Lot 129 from Westmoreland Street. The portion of the, of the 41 Road south of the Lot 129 and north of Little Lake Parkway has been developed into housing in a private driveway and is not entitled to the city's street purposes. And DECAS is seeking to reportion Site Two into three smaller lots. into three smaller lots cut by the outer boundaries of 41 Road Right Away. Once disposition approval has been granted for what is currently what's Lot 129, the city will seek to dispose of the two outer reportion lots. It will seek to keep the reportion lot which lies within the 41 Road Right Away in city ownership for an eventual transfer of jurisdiction to the Department of Transportation. Um, Site Three encompasses Lot 74 of the same block which is also a regularly shaped sliver lot with 200 square, 207 square feet of area and contains one foot of street furniture along Little Lake Parkway. Next slide, please. This image is showing the view of the portion of the disposition Site Two facing southwest from 41 Road. The sliver lot is depicted by the solid pink line across the screen. As mentioned earlier, 41 Road right, road to the south of Site Two with a private driveway and doesn't continue its city street purposes. Next slide, please. This is the view of the street furniture of disposition Site Three facing northeast from Little Lake Parkway. Next slide, please. And this is another view of disposition Site Three, street furniture facing northeast from Little Lake Parkway. The view is showing the retaining wall within the pink dotted line that likely corresponds with the width of the sliver lot. Next slide, please. Um, the disposition Site Four is also located in a largely residential low-density district as we can see in this man's map. Next slide, please. Site Four is the fourth lot for disposition in Queens Block 8185, Lot 58 depicted by pink dotted line with purple shade in the map. It lies at the corner of Rushmore Avenue and 244th Street between the adjacent Lot 53 of the same block and then built, and the unbuilt portion of 244th Street Right Away. The block is bounded by 243rd Street to the west, Rushmore Avenue to the north, 244th Street to the east, and Van Zandt Avenue to the south. It is a triangular shaped lot with an area of 109 square feet and has three feet of street furniture along the Rushmore Avenue. Next slide, please. This is the view of the street furniture of disposition Site Four facing southeast from Rushmore Avenue. The street furniture of the lot approximately corresponds with five feet to the right of the, of the portion in the photo depicted by the dotted line. Next slide, please. DECAST is seeking disposition approval of the four city-owned surplus properties to provide the city the flexibility and authority to dispose of these sites in the future. Um, facilitating disposition approval for these lots would allow the city to sell these properties to their respective adjacent property owners, which they do either by option or direct sale. And this concludes my presentation. Happy to take your.
Thanks very much. These assorted lots. Um, what is the market for these? Who, who would have any interest in adding the ability to? Who actually might have an interest?
They are the. As late as DECAST will be able to explain more during the presentation. Um, but they, this program allows them, requires them to offer these sliver lots to adjacent property owners.
That happens. Property. You may not, you may be. People do much, you always have some space between it, but also if someone found a city liability issue right now since they're the owner, you know, unless there's another way to someone else who might be involved. A little increase in savings and the, bringing up the math and the people who. I think if I understand Commissioner Bozart's question, who would want to take on the obligation? What is the possible benefit? Although I will caution everybody since we have some technical issues, uh, I, I'm going to just step back and back and forth. Or move some of our electronics. Um, so Commissioner Bozart, back to you. But I guess that is, I think that is the question, which is who would want it? Why would you want to take on the obligation? You haven't, you know, it hasn't stopped anybody from doing anything.
Yeah, I think it hasn't changed anyone's life not owning it and presumably, I guess they could take it. And again, you may not have the answer for this one.
Okay, with that, that disposition of the assortment of sites is now certified. Thank you very much. Let's move on. Uh, the next item is the Red Hook Coastal Resiliency. Get right into it.
The third item on our agenda is a certification of a city map amendment and acquisition in Brooklyn Community District Six. Our presenter is Emily Buckton.
Oh, Emily.
Oh, so. That's my mic. This is also my mic.
Sure, okay. You just do your thing and we'll follow.
And I don't have the power to change the slide. Oh. Right. That's really. Good afternoon, Chair Grandek and Commissioners. Um, this is the certification presentation for the land use actions associated with Red Hook Coastal Resiliency, a proposed neighborhood flood protection system in Brooklyn. This is a joint application from four city agencies, the New York City Departments of Design and Construction, Transportation, Citywide Administrative Services, and Parks and Recreation for changes to the city map and acquisitions to facilitate construction, operation, and maintenance of the Red Hook Coastal Resiliency flood protection system in Red Hook, Brooklyn, Community District Six. The project area is in the Red Hook neighborhood of Brooklyn with the approximate alignment of the proposed flood protection system outlined here with a black dashed line. Red Hook is on a peninsula bounded by Buttermilk Channel to the west, the Upper Bay of New York Harbor to the south, Gowanis Bay to the east, and by Hamilton Avenue, the elevated Gowanis Expressway and the entrance to the Hugh El Carey Tunnel or Battery Tunnel to the north. New York City's flood risk is high and Hurricane Sandy was a devastating example of New York City's vulnerability to coastal flooding. On October 29th, 2012, Hurricane Sandy and the resulting storm surge flooded nearly the entire Red Hook Peninsula, leaving many residents and businesses without electricity, heat, and running water for extended periods. The city uses a multi-layered strategy to ensure that neighborhoods, buildings, infrastructure, and people can withstand, recover quickly from flooding. This strategy utilizes coastal protection system, coastal protection systems, resilient buildings and land use, infrastructure hardening, and emergency preparedness to reduce damage and disruption from coastal flood events. Coastal protection systems like Red Hook Coastal Resiliency are our first line of defense against coastal flooding. They are large-scale capital projects that reduce coastal flood risk for an entire or a significant portion of a neighborhood by integrating flood barriers into the neighborhood's context. New York City's planned coastal protection systems rely on a wide-ranging set of engineering and design strategies that are determined by many factors, including the local flood risk profile, visual impacts, waterfront, public access, physical landscape, and land uses. These are just a few examples of neighborhood coastal flood protection projects that are underway across the city. It's not a complete overview. Eastside Coastal Resiliency in Manhattan required two ULER actions, acquisitions, and a zoning tax amendment related to waterfront regulations which were approved in 2019. And that project is now under construction with anticipated completion in 2026. Lower Manhattan Coastal Resiliency includes a suite of projects in Battery Park City, Battery Park, the Financial District, Seaport, and the Brooklyn Bridge Montgomery area, which are in various stages of design and construction. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is advancing the regional New York, New Jersey harbor and tributary study as well as neighborhood-specific projects in the Bronx, Staten Island, and Queens. And Red Hook Coastal Resiliency is unique among these projects in that the neighborhood's waterfront is largely privately owned and features active maritime industrial uses. It's the first of its kind to be designed within the context of a mixed-use neighborhood in New York City. In addition to Red Hook Coastal Resiliency, the city is also actively investing in other resiliency projects in Red Hook, including $550 million in NYCHA's Red Hook Houses and over $100 million in environmental remediation of Red Hook Park through 2025 and upgrades to the Columbia Sewer, Columbia Street Sewer Network beginning construction in 2027. The city has been working with area stakeholders on the planning and design of Red Hook's coastal flood protection system since 2013. This initial work led to the 2016 Red Hook Integrated Flood Protection System feasibility study, which identified ways to reduce flood risks from coastal storm surge and sea level rise to improve Red Hook's overall resiliency. The study evaluated various flood protection alignments and recommended a project that would be eligible for funding through the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and that would address stakeholder goals of preserving access to waterfront open spaces and working waterfront uses. The actions requested in this application would facilitate the resulting Red Hook Coastal Resiliency project, a $100 million capital project funded by a $50 million FEMA grant and a $50 million city match. Project design began in late 2019 and has included four public meetings and numerous small group sessions with community stakeholders. And following ULER, construction is anticipated to take place from early 2025 to early 2028. Next, I'll walk through the existing conditions in Red Hook and the flood risk the proposed project is designed to address. While Red Hook's general land use pattern is characterized by an industrial waterfront and a residential core, these mixes are, these uses are mixed throughout. Industrial, manufacturing, transportation, and utility uses are located in one-to-six-story warehouses and include light manufacturing, artist studios, production and event spaces, storage and distribu- storage and distribution, auto body shops, construction-related businesses, and surface parking. Commercial uses include grocery stores, the IKEA Furniture Store, restaurants, shops, and a few hotels. And residential uses include two-to-four-story warehouses, or row houses, four-to-six-story multifamily lots, and Red Hook Houses, the largest night development in Brooklyn which consists of approximately 24 six-story buildings. Red Hook has a population of approximately 11,000 residents, 70% of whom live in NYCHA Red Hook Houses. The neighborhood is served by the B61 and B57 buses and a New York City ferry stop at Atlantic Basin. The nearest subway stations provide S and G train service and are located in the Carroll Gardens and Gowanis neighborhoods to the northeast across Hamilton Avenue and the Gowanis Expressway. And while the vast majority of the waterfront is privately owned, public waterfront access points include a park at Valentino Pier, the Pier 44 Waterfront Garden, and waterfront escalons at IKEA and Columbia Street. Medium to heavy manufacturing zones are mapped along the waterfront with an M2 district along the neighborhood's western shoreline and an M31 district along the southeastern shoreline. A light industrial M11 zone was mapped to serve as a buffer between the industrial waterfront and the residential core of the neighborhood. And low to medium-density residential zones with, with limited commercial overlays are located in the center of the neighborhood. A local truck route wraps around the neighborhood on Van Brunt, Beard, and Bay Streets. The zoning in Red Hook has remained largely, largely unchanged since 1961 with a few zoning and land use policy updates to note. In 1996, the Community Board's 6197A Plan for Red Hook was approved covering the area outlined here in pink. The plan sought to balance dual goals of increasing housing supply while preserving and growing the neighborhood's industrial economy. Proposals included a mixed-use zoning study, increased public waterfront access, and truck route modifications. The proposed project overlaps with the Red Hook Stores rezoning outlined in yellow, or shaded in yellow, which was, which mapped one of the city's first mixed-use districts in 2002 as well as the IKEA rezoning area of 2004 outlined in the dark blue. The majority of the proposed project area is within the Southwest Brooklyn Industrial Business Zone, shown here shaded in purple, which spans Red Hook's industrial waterfront and extends to Columbia Waterfront District to the north and Sunset Park to the south. The IBZ was established in 2006 and tax credits and other city-based programs to support industrial businesses are available in that area. The majority of the neighborhood, shown here in the lighter shade of blue, is in the 1% chance flood plain, which shows the extent of flooding that could be expected from a storm that has a 1% chance of taking place each year. This area has an elevation generally ranging from four to eight feet. The areas shown, oh, yeah. The areas shown in green have a lower flood risk due to their higher natural topography with elevations above 10 feet. Red Hook Coastal Resiliency is designed to protect the neighborhood from a storm that has a 10% chance of taking place every year with a base flood elevation of seven feet. The project also accounts for sea level rise using the New York City Panel on Climate Change's highest estimate of sea level rise at 30 inches by 2100, bringing the elevation to 9.6 feet. An additional six inches of freeboard to account for storm variability brings the overall design flood elevation for this project to 10 feet. This elevation means protection from 99.9% of all coastal storms that have impacted Red Hook in the past while accounting for future sea level rise. This video. Oh, it was already working. I really want it to work. Um. Well, this is the second video. Okay, this video, if it works, um, shows the extent of neighborhood flooding that would take place today during the design flood event. It's not working. Um, oh no, that's not what I wanted. Okay, we're gonna skip. Um, without construction of the proposed project, the storm surge would enter the neighborhood through low points around Atlantic Basin and Beard Street. That's definitely not what I wanted. Um, and result in flooding of roughly 65% of the total area of Red Hook. This slide that we're looking at now. So, the extent of flooding that would take place during the same design flood event after construction of the proposed project, a rough outline of which is shown in black. We are gonna move on. Okay, um. The proposed project takes advantage of natural topographic high points, highlighted here with plus 10, tying them together with a system of flood walls, raised street grades, deployable flood gates, and other supporting infrastructure intended to reduce the risk of coastal storm flooding. The flood protection system would provide passive flood protection to an elevation of eight feet with deployable features activated ahead of a storm, providing additional protection to an elevation of 10 feet. It is designed to minimize impacts on waterfront access and views and to allow for continuation of the working waterfront. And the design maximizes the use of the city's right-of-way and includes an expansion of the Brooklyn Waterfront Greenway and other streetscape and green infrastructure improvements as well as sewer upgrades to improve drainage. The project utilizes standard design elements for coastal resiliency projects subject to public design commission review. These are flood walls, roller gates, and flip-up gates that you'll see throughout the presentation. Next, I'll do a brief walkthrough of the project area and proposed projects moving around the neighborhood from the northwest corner here at Summit and Van Brunt Streets to the southeast. The key in the bottom right of the screen will show where we are within the neighborhood. And more details on the proposed designer are available online at nyc.gov/rhcr. In this view, we're standing on Van Brunt Street looking west toward the Port Authority property and Atlantic Basin with the entrance to Red Hook Container Terminal on the right. The Brooklyn Waterfront Greenway wraps around the Port Authority property from Van Brunt Street to the north, along Summit Street, straight ahead, and left on Inlay Street at the end of this block. Interim flood protection measures installed in 2017 are visible along the fence, along the fence line of the Red Hook Terminal on the right. And the renovated historic industrial building on the left features a Tesla car dealership. The proposed project involves regrading the entrance to the Container Terminal as well as the street and sidewalk. as the street and sidewalk at the corner of Summit and Imlay Streets. A flood wall would be constructed to replace the current interim flood protection system along the perimeter of the Port Authority property, and the existing bike path would be reconstructed as a grade-separated greenway. Moving south along the perimeter of the Port Authority property and the Brooklyn Waterfront Greenway, the intersection of Imlay and Bone Streets features an entrance to the Brooklyn Cruise Terminal. Christie's find-out art storage services are located in the historic lot building on the left. The proposed project would construct a new ramp at the Bone Street entrance to the Brooklyn Cruise Terminal. A flood wall is transferred across the ramp and then continues south inside the Port Authority property. Here, we're standing at the corner of Pioneer Street at Imlay Street, looking west. A city-owned lot is on the right, and the Port Authority property is straight ahead. Interim flood protection measures are located along the fence line on the right, and the existing greenway is slightly elevated above the sidewalk also on the right. On the south side of the street and our left side is a historic manufacturing building that is home to Pioneer Works, a private nonprofit arts and cultural center that features studio and exhibition space and public programming. The proposed project includes construction of flood walls, reconstruction of the greenway as part of the flood protection system, tree planting, sidewalk widening, new seeding, and street regrading to improve drainage. In this view, we are standing in Port Authority property at the entrance to the New York City Ferry Terminal facing southeast toward Pioneer Works in the area where we were just standing. The greenway can be seen turning south from Pioneer Street to Conover Street, where it continues for a few blocks before ending. The proposed project includes a multi-use path which would raise to a 10-foot elevation at the entrance to the ferry terminal. The greenway is redesigned to enter into the Port Authority property, and proposed benches and tree planting can be seen along Pioneer Street. Here is a section of the Pioneer Street proposal with flood walls highlighted in blue, where you can see the greenway and multi-use path integrated into the flood protection system. Moving west within the Port Authority property, we're now looking southwest with the Atlantic Basin Substation and Brooklyn Cruise Terminal on our right, a storage warehouse on the left, and the New York City Ferry Terminal is behind us. A flood wall is proposed along the face of the storage warehouse, around the substation, and continuing down Ferris Street. The greenway continues down Ferris Street as a grade-separated path. A regraded parking lot in Port Authority property ties back into a series of flood walls and raised streets, allowing for transfer of the flood protection alignment to continue down Ferris Street without restricting pedestrian, bike, or vehicle traffic. The flood wall ends just south of Wolcott Street, where the existing grades are above 10 feet, allowing for flood protection without additional intervention. Now, we're standing on Ferris Street, looking north toward Sullivan Street and the Port Authority property. On the right, a, you can see a historic industrial warehouse that is still in use as a manufacturing facility for ER Butler &amp; Company, a manufacturer of specialty architectural hardware. With the current end of the Brooklyn Waterfront Greenway a few blocks to the north, this street remains a popular route for cyclists to and from Valentino Pier, a publicly accessible waterfront park to the south, which with, which has views of the Statue of Liberty and the Arizona Bridge. And on the left, you can see a severely degraded sidewalk, the interim flood protection system, a construction fence, and a large vacant lot. The project, the proposed project includes a flood wall along the western edge of Ferris Street on the left, a continuation of the Brooklyn Waterfront Greenway as a grade-separated path, and regraded, regrading Ferris Street to improve drainage. Here is a section of the same location where you can see the flood wall at less than four feet above grade, highlighted in blue on the left. Moving south, there are no active flood protection proposals or ULC actions within this area where existing grades are at or above 10 feet. The proposed project includes reconstructing the streets to improve drainage and provide the continuation of the Brooklyn Waterfront Greenway. The southwest corner of Red Hook is a popular destination with local businesses, including bars, breweries, restaurants, event venues, and light manufacturing studios. Proposed flood protection system at this location at Conover and Beard Streets includes the greenway diverging from the flood protection system to continue down Beard Street, while the flood protection alignment would continue down Conover Street toward Reed Street on our right. Parking on the south side of Beard Street is reduced at this location and replaced with a widened sidewalk and greenway, which is designed to weave around mature, healthy trees. Moving south on Conover Street, we are now looking southeast toward the Red Hook Stores' Adaptive Reuse Project, which contains a ground-floor food bazaar grocery store with apartments above, and a waterfront esplanade. Utilities from the Red Hook Stores and Beard Street warehouses are located in the food bazaar parking lot at the southeast corner of Conover and Reed Streets. The proposed flood protection alignment is transferred at this location from a flood wall on the western edge of Conover Street on the right, across a raised sidewalk, or across a raised crosswalk, to the southern edge of Reed Street on the left. A flood wall is also proposed to wrap around the utilities in the top-left corner of the Now, standing on Van Brunt Street at Reed Street, looking north, with the food bazaar grocery store over our left shoulder off-screen, multiple restaurants and shops are in view on the left, and the historic Beard Street warehouses on the right feature light manufacturing and artist studios. The proposed project includes another raised crosswalk in this location to transfer the flood protection alignment from flood walls located on the north and south sides of Reed Street. To allow for continued access to the businesses on the west side of Van Brunt Street, the wall is placed in the middle of a widened sidewalk. A sliding gate at Reed Street and flip-up gates at entrances to the businesses on the west side of Van Brunt Street would be deployed ahead of a storm to provide additional protection. And here, you can see the sliding gate across Reed Street in the closed position. These are two sections of Van Brunt Street, highlighting the flood wall on the top and the flip-up gates on the bottom. The flood wall would reach a maximum height of four feet above grade at this location. We'll see if this works. This is a video walkthrough of the portion of the proposed project covered in the last few slides, starting at Conover and Beard Streets, but I'm gonna take a little break. We're turning left onto Van Brunt Street. Now, we're standing on Beard Street at Van Brunt Street, looking east toward IKEA with the Beard Street warehouse across the street on the right. A raised crosswalk would transfer the flood protection alignment from the flood wall located along the east side, or the, sorry, along the west side of Van Brunt Street on the right to the south side of Beard Street across Van Brunt. A sliding gate is tucked into the, into a pocket behind a fixed flood wall along the Beard Street Warehouse Building on the right, and the greenway would continue down Beard Street. And here is another view of a sliding gate in the closed position across Van Brunt Street. Moving on to Beard Street, the proposed flood protection system and greenway would continue east along Beard Street with flood walls on the south or seaward side of the street and flip-up gates providing access to properties adjacent to the flood wall, including Beard Street warehouses, an Amazon Last Mile distribution facility, and the IKEA waterfront public access area. Beard Street would also be raised in this location. Now, we're standing on Beard Street, looking south toward the IKEA waterfront public access area, which features lawns, trees, benches, and an esplanade. The proposed project will redesign the entrance to the IKEA waterfront with an ADA accessible ramp and flip-up gate, providing access across the flood wall and across the elevated greenway. This section shows Beard Street around the IKEA waterfront. Beard Street would remain a two-way street with grade changes to improve drainage and provide flood protection, as well as expanded sidewalks and a separated, a grade-separated Re raising at the IKEA entrance would transfer the flood protection alignment between flood walls on the south and north sides of Beard Street, allowing for uninterrupted bus service to the IKEA bus stop, and the flood wall continues adjacent to Red Hook Farms, east toward Columbia Street. This is an aerial view of the area we just walked through, featuring Red Hook Farm, surface parking, and a school north of Hallick and Beard Streets on the right, and IKEA on the, IKEA and a new, not yet operational, Amazon Last Mile facility to the south on, in the top-left portion of the. Todd Triangle, highlighted in yellow, is a small parcel of parkland featuring grass, ornamental trees, and shrubs, and a flagpole behind a fence. The area highlighted in pink is a former portion of Hallick Street, which was demapped to improve the geometry of the intersection as part of the 2004 IKEA rezoning, and which features, and which functions today as an extension of the sidewalk. The proposed project would reconstruct and expand Todd Triangle to provide both raised elevation for flood protection and improved green space. Raised crosswalks would feature, would transfer the flood protection alignment from the flood wall at the south side of Red Hook Farm through Todd Triangle to connect, to connect to an existing 10-foot elevation within Red Hook Park over our shoulders to the left. Here is another walkthrough, starting back at Conover Street and moving down Beard Street eastward toward IKEA. See the greenway on the right. The flood wall, again, at a maximum height of four feet above grade. The reconstructed entrance to the IKEA waterfront public access area. And here, the flood protection system is, is really just street grade changes, so it doesn't look super obvious, but there's a flood wall on the left along the, the Red Hook Farm. And now, we're at Todd Triangle. Next, I'm gonna walk through again, and show the line use actions requested to facilitate the proposed project. The applicants are seeking changes to the city map, highlighted in orange. That include changes to legal street grades, mapping of Sullivan Street west of Ferris Street, and the mapping of new parkland to enlarge Todd Triangle. While the proposed project will be developed primarily on city-owned property and the public right-of-way, the proposed project also requires acquisition of real property to facilitate easements, allowing the city to access lots adjacent to the proposed project for operation, inspection, and maintenance of the flood protection elements installed on public land. The city will seek easements roughly 15 feet wide adjacent to each flood wall and gate, and all existing structures, businesses, and homes adjacent to the acquisition areas are proposed to remain. I'll walk through the proposed actions in two sections, first, the Atlantic Basin area, and second, the Beard Street area, moving in the same direction through the neighborhood as we have thus far. So first, here is the Atlantic Basin area in the western portion of the neighborhood, with the orientation pivoted here with north on our left. The approximate flood protection alignment is shown in blue. Proposed changes to the city map are indicated with yellow MM, and proposed acquisitions are indicated in pink PQ that will remain consistent throughout. So in the northwest corner of the project area, Imlay and Summit Streets, the applicants seek a map change to raise the legal street grade, highlighted in yellow. And a quick technical note here before I get into all the grade changes, street grade changes are shown throughout this presentation as they appear in the application map, which use Brooklyn Highway datum to measure elevation. FEMA uses a different measurement system, NAVI-88, which is approximately 1.5 feet higher than Brooklyn Highway datum. So for example, the proposed map change featured on this slide would raise the legal street grade from 6.0 to 6.23 feet as measured in Brooklyn Highway datum, or from 7.5 to 7.7 feet as measured in NAVI-88. The applicants are also requesting an acquisition of part of the Port Authority property outlined in pink to facilitate easements, allowing the city to construct, operate, and inspect, inspect and maintain the flood wall in this location. Similarly, moving south, the applicants seek a change in the city map to increase the legal grade at the intersection of Imlay and Bone Streets. And this is another view of the proposed acquisition of part of the Port Authority property with Atlantic Basin at our backs and the Christie's storage facility on the other side of the flood alignment. This view shows a continuation of the proposed acquisition of Port Authority property adjacent to a condominium building. To the right of the screen, construction of the flood protection system on a city-owned lot does not require acquisition action. At Imlay, Pioneer, and Conover, Conover Streets, this area includes acquisition of Port Authority property, as well as proposed changes to the city map to regrade streets. This slide shows the final extent of the proposed acquisitions of Port Authority property to allow for construction, operation, inspection, and maintenance of the flood walls and gate, as well as raising the street, raising the grade of a parking lot in the area labeled plus 10. City map changes are also required in this area to raise the legal street grade along Ferris Street. The city, moving south along Ferris Street, the city seeks acquisitions to facilitate easements on three privately-owned lots under common ownership. These easements would allow the city to inspect and maintain the flood wall. Mapping actions in this area include mapping Sullivan Street west of Ferris Street. This segment of Sullivan Street is currently a CCO street, meaning that while not mapped, it is open and in use by the public and is maintained by the city. The applicant also requests changes to the city map to increase the legal grade at Wolcott and Ferris Streets. At Conover, Van Dyke, Beard, and Reed Streets, acquisitions are requested to facilitate easements to inspect and maintain the flood wall on the west side of Conover Street and to construct, operate, inspect, and maintain the flood wall and gate on and around the lot on the south side of Reed Street. This area also includes proposed city map changes to raise the legal street grade at the intersections highlighted here. Next, we'll walk through the proposed actions to facilitate the project in the southern portion of Red Hook neighborhood around Beard Street. At Van Brunt Street, between Reed and Beard Streets, acquisitions are requested to facilitate easements for seven lots on the west side of Van Brunt Street, allowing the city to operate, inspect, and maintain the proposed flood wall and gates adjacent to those lots. And a change in the city map to raise the legal street grade at the intersection of Van Brunt and Beard Streets is also proposed. At Beard Street, between Van Brunt and Dwight Streets, acquisitions are requested to facilitate easements from the two lots on the south side of Beard Street, allowing the city to operate, inspect, and maintain the proposed flood wall and gates. And a city map change to raise the legal grade of Beard Street is proposed. Moving east down Beard Street, further city map changes to raise the legal grade of Beard Street are proposed. An acquisition is requested to facilitate an easement, allowing the city to construct, operate, inspect, and maintain the proposed flood wall and gate at the entrance to the IKEA waterfront public access area. Between Dwight and Otsego Streets, the flood alignment transfers from the south to the north side of Beard Street, an acquisition to facilitate an easement for the lot currently utilized as surface parking on the north side of Beard Street is proposed. City map changes to raise the legal grade of Beard Street are proposed here as well. And Red Hook Farm is city-owned, so no easement is required to access and maintain the proposed flood wall adjacent to that lot. At Columbia and Hallick Streets, a city map change is requested to map new parkland to expand Todd Triangle southward. As I mentioned earlier, this area is a former vestige of Hallick Street, which was demapped in 2004 to improve the geometry of this intersection. Mapping parkland in this location will allow the city to expand, expand and improve Todd Triangle to serve as a piece of the proposed flood protection system, as well as publicly accessible green space. And there are two final proposed changes to the city map at Court Street, between Bay and Lorraine Streets, in the step- in the northeast corner of the neighborhood, where the city seeks to raise legal grade of the streets to facilitate upgrades to the sewer system. In summary, the New York City Departments of Designing Construction, Transportation, Citywide Administrative Services, Parks and Recreation, wow. Excuse me. Right at the end. In summary, DDC, DOT, VCS, and Parks and Rec are seeking changes to the city map and acquisitions to facilitate construction of the Red Hook Coastal Resiliency Project. This FEMA-funded project would provide neighborhood coastal fund protection from frequent storms into the future through a system of floodwalls, raised street grades, and deployable floodgates that would allow for continued access to the waterfront and be streamlined with an expansion of the Brooklyn waterfront greenway and other streetscape improvements. And with that, I am happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And bravo. Very thorough presentation. This is, as you noted, it's a big project. It's a $100 million project with funds from the federal government, funds from the city. And the alignment for flood protection, a lot of these questions about where and how were set years ago. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. PDC review, a lot of different reviews. FEMA has, I think it was between the 30% and 60% design phase of this project, the flood protection alignment, so like where exactly the line of protection is located was locked in through the FEMA review. So that alignment, at this point, if it were to change, would set us back a couple of stages in FEMA review. And we're currently at the 90% design phase.
So obviously, the actions for us are pretty critical in enabling the thing. Not a lot of West Cities.
As I mentioned earlier, so this was based on a feasibility study conducted in 2016. So it is quite late in the stages for this project in terms of design.
Great. Let me see if there are questions.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you so much, Emily, for the presentation. Really, really useful. As we begin to think about this, I just wanted to start with a quick question. It's clear that this is building on a couple of different design processes, but could you summarize a little bit what type of community engagement has the city done on this particular, or in preparation for this place to be fair?
Who has led those four public workshops in addition to small working group meetings and meetings with electeds throughout the process. So public meetings, both in person and virtual, over the last... There's definitely a lot of attention on preserving neighborhood character and preserving a working waterfront. There's a lot of advocacy in this neighborhood for waterborne freight and making sure that a flood protection system in this neighborhood isn't just an imposing wall at the edge of the water that would cut off access to the water, both for recreation views and for maritime industry. That's been the primary that I've heard.
So thank you for that. I just wanted to quickly ask. So in fact, I wanted to, I'm interested in the neighborhood character part of this. And specifically in that regard, I'm wondering, how does the project relate to other infrastructure conversations associated with freight? Of course, maritime, given that this is a significant maritime industrial area. But I also just wanted to ask you a little bit, given the fact that DOT is part of the team, how does this relate with the DQE envisioning, sort of like larger conversations?
Yeah, so this map is actually from the, no, this is from the DDC, the most recent design public meeting, which shows other infrastructure projects underway in the neighborhood. Very much coordinated, a lot of the agencies advancing these capital projects are co-applicants or in weekly meetings to advance Red Hook Coastal Resiliency. So they're very much working together. On neighborhood character, there's, the things that are primary there are cobblestones, many of which will be replaced as part of this project, and trees, many of which will be preserved as part of this project. And there's a whole plan for replacing, for planting new trees where they are, where they have to be, taken out to construct a project. You also asked about maritime freight and DOT. Yeah, so, do I also have this slide? Yes, this is showing a timeline of the same project. And the addition here is DOT's Red Hook Traffic and Truck Study, which began in the winter or the spring of 2022 and will continue through 2024. That specifically looking at traffic in Red Hook related to new development of last mile facilities. And they're in the existing condition phase right now, but that could lead to, it will lead to recommendations, which may include recommendations to redesign the truck network. So that's an ongoing conversation and study, and also very much aligned and integrated with this proposal. The environmental review for Red Hook Coastal Resiliency produced data on traffic that's actually being used in that study as part of the baseline. So they're very much working together. On the DQE, I'm not as positive. So I think I'm going to have to get back to you on that one.
Thanks for that. I appreciate it. I look forward to sort of like learning a little bit more of the details in terms of how these proposals are related. But specifically with neighborhood character, I appreciate what you said. I'm mostly, most interested in the industrial activity. And so, you know, for example, one question that came to mind as I was reviewing the WRP requirements is the potential dislodgement of chemicals. It's in these areas, it's not just whether things are, or places, buildings are going to flood, but also how are we going to contain potential chemical dislodgement? And so I'm wondering to what extent the proposal is considering or has considered that. I mean, and I'm also, I'm also aware that the design of this is sort of a longer process, but that has been, that has been a long conversation as well. Advocacy groups like the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance have done extensive research on this. And so I'm wondering, you know, if that has been considered. We don't have to do it now, but when this comes back, I would love to see how much of this, in addition to mitigating potential flooding, is actually addressing other issues to be expected in a neighborhood like this one, where there could be chemical dislodgement, et cetera. Both, yeah, both, yeah, both. Then one final question was, there's another WRP requirement that I think applies here, which is the combination of both structural and nonstructural strategies. And so it sounds like there is some permeability there, but I'm wondering if, when we see it again, can we see a little bit more detail in terms of where, what type of pavements are you thinking? Where is that water going to be collected? Where is it going to go, in addition to just sort of like blocking it, basically?
So I will admit, this presentation didn't do a full overview of the proposed green infrastructure and sewer upgrades, and they're very much part of the design proposal, so we can make sure we have that.
Thank you, Sarah. Make it quick. I was, I was just curious, with regard to those pop-up flood walls that are at intersections, would those be activated by just volume of water, or do you know?
Maintenance and operation are really a citywide question because the city is working on building flood protection systems like this, not like this, but similar to this in neighborhoods across the city. As of September, there's a new Bureau of Coastal Resilience at DEP, which will be responsible for the maintenance and operation of flood protection systems citywide. So that's being staffed up. That's like, there's been a question for years, like who's going to be in charge of operating these things? So that's the answer, DEP. And they are manual. Someone has to go and engage the gate.
Great. Thank you very much. This side is certified.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much for all of your hard work. It's Sarah.
I'm standing up for the audio on YouTube that this is certified and we're moving to the next slide.
Okay, this one is certified. We are moving. We're just fixing.
You are new to the market. Okay, we'll just do audio tests and zoom.
Test, test.
Test, test. The fourth item on our agenda is a certification with zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District 15. Our presenter is Lucia Capashio.
Lucia.
Hello, good afternoon. You're terrific. This is a private application from PG Realty Investments LLC for a zoning map amendment from the R4 district to an R7 AC24 district within the Special Ocean Parkway district, and a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to facilitate the development of a new seven-story building, mixed-use development, including over 41,000 square feet of residential space, or 45 dwelling units, 12 of which would be permanently income-restricted, and over 5,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space. This project is located at 396400 Avenue X between East Second Street and East Third Street in Gravesend, Community District 15, Brooklyn. This is an aerial view looking north at Avenue X in the project area. This project is in Gravesend, which is a neighborhood in southern Brooklyn, bounded by Midwood to the north, Homecrest and Sheep's Head Bay to the east, Brighton Beach to the south, and Bat Beach to the west. The project area consists of three lots fronting on Avenue X, and is also in the Special Ocean Parkway district. Avenue X is a major east-west mixed-use and commercial corridor that runs from Gravesend to Garretson Beach. It is 80 feet wide, and it has a variety of uses, including residential apartment buildings, mixed-use residential and commercial buildings, and local retail stores. The Avenue X subway stop that has the F train is six short blocks from the development site. And the 86th Street entrance stop is also located about nine blocks away, located off this map. The area is also served by multiple bus lines, including the B1, which runs from Bay Ridge to Manhattan Beach, and the B4, which runs from Bay Ridge to Sheep's Head Bay. The project area is also within the 1% annual chance flooding. Before discussing the current land uses and zoning for this area, I want to share some historical context. During the mid-20th century, this part of southern Brooklyn naturally saw significant development and densification as transit was expanded and housing demand increased. This demand can be seen in the transition from one-to-two family homes to elevator apartment buildings in the area. After the implementation of the 1961 zoning resolution, however, this area was downzoned to an R4, which locked the late 1950s built contracts into place. Additional development restrictions have been deplaced during the 1970s with the aforementioned Special Ocean Parkway district. And this is a second comparison of the same 1996-built contracts and the 2016-built contracts, which, as you can see, besides the painting of some roofs from black to white, has remained essentially unchanged in over 60 years. And finally, you can see here in the present-day aerial from 2023, the current built form and the land use conditions along Avenue X and the surrounding area. All the six-story multi-family apartment buildings in the surrounding blocks of this project era were built between 1957 and 1960. The center of the school to the west of the development site was built in 1931. This is a land use map with Avenue X in the center. And the project area is outlined in light blue, and the development is outlined in pink. Well, I know lots on the map are all residential uses, which range from single-family detached houses to medium-density apartment buildings. Blue lots are public institutional uses. And in this area, they include a public school and a yeshiva. There's also a strong presence of commercial uses seen in red, including the development site. These uses include restaurants, laundromats, nail salons, and convenience stores, many of which have residential units located above, including directly across from the development site. This project area and the surrounding area is not within our important zoning district. The R4 is the low-density general residential district that permits residential buildings up to .75 FAR and community facility buildings up to 2 FAR. The surrounding six-story residential buildings in this area are legally not conforming and overbuilt in the R4, as I previously mentioned. And they're also shown here in the darker yellow. Directly across the street on Avenue X to the north are C12 commercial overlays. These overlays extend west to McDonald Avenue. Project area is also located in the Special Ocean Parkway district, approved in 1977, includes blocks east and west of Ocean Parkway. The Special Ocean Parkway district was established to reserve the character of one- and two-family homes along Ocean Parkway itself and to limit the proliferation and bulk of community facilities of the mid-area. This project is not impacted by the special regulations of the Special Ocean Parkway district. Looking southeast from Avenue X, we see the project area, which consists of the six-story residential building and the development site, which consists of two buildings on two lots. Those include a one-story medical office and a two-story mixed-use medical office and residential building. As we look south directly at the proposed project area, you can see that the proposed development is surrounded on both sides by the six-story buildings that are overbuilt for the district. As we look east from Avenue X to show both the north and south sides of the street. In this view, in addition to the apartment buildings, you can also see the commercial that's located in the C12 commercial overlay on the north side of Avenue X. The proposed actions would facilitate the development of a seven-story mixed-use commercial residential building, totaling approximately 46,000 square feet. The proposed development would include 41,000 square feet of residential space. The residential portion would include approximately 45 dwelling units, which 12 would be permanently income-restricted. The development would also include approximately 5,000 square feet of commercial on the ground floor. Parking would be provided at a subgrade level. The applicant is currently proposing 45 accessory parking spaces. We will know that- Um, we will know that, um, only twenty-four parking spaces are required by this zoning district. The proposed actions, um, include a zoning map amendment to change the existing R4 district along Avenue X to an R7 AC24 district. R7A districts are median-density contextual residential districts, where quality housing regulations are mandatory. The proposed R7AC24 zoning district would permit a residential F A R of up to four-point-six when providing exclusionary, um, inclusionary housing, not exclusionary, uh, when providing inclusionary housing and a commercial F A R. In R7A districts, new buildings must comply with the quality housing height and setback regulations. When in an M I H area, the maximum base height in R7A districts is seventy-five feet, and the maximum building height is ninety-five feet. The R7A district results in buildings around seven to nine stories that come up to the street with a setback from the street between, um, between floors four to seven. Residential development in R7A is a typical New York City apartment building, similar to those found already on Avenue X. The applicant proposes a zoning text amendment to appendix F to, uh, map M I H determinants for the R7AC24 district, creating currently income-restricted housing via M I H options one and two. The applicant has not yet decided which M I H option will be applied to the development out of deference to the new council member. In summary, this is a private application for a zoning map amendment from the R4 to an R7AC24 district and a zoning text amendment to appendix F to facilitate the development of a new seven-story mixed-use building, including forty-one thousand square feet of residential space and five thousand square feet of residential space. Um, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. But let me start with Commissioner Soriano.
Just a clarification. So, the applicant is not selecting an option for the project on, out of deference for an incoming council member who then they want to weigh in on the option they're selecting. Not that the applicant would choose an option and then, or more than one option, and then go through the process and work with the new council member on how to, who obviously gets this at the end. It has probably the most authority in terms of getting what they may want out of this. Is, is that what I heard you say?
So they're mapping, yeah, they're mapping options one and two, so both options will be mapped. Um, this is in our Kagan's district. This is council district forty-seven, and it's switching to Justin Brennan.
Yes.
So, yeah, it's out of, they, they've had conversations with, um, council member Kagan O'Vill past, you know, two years and, um, because it's switching, they would like to meet with council member Brennan before publicly announcing where they want.
I understand and I respect the fact that, that the applicant knows they want to at least begin this journey with an understanding that whoever the city council member may be in the district is supportive in some way without having all those details potentially resolved in advance. But they are mapping one and two, so there is, there is a mapping. They are, okay. So, all right, I mean, I just, this, this goes to, you know, sort of a bigger picture issue about how this all works and the role we play in this. Um, but I, I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Soriano.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Two quick questions. One was, um, thanks for highlighting the vulnerability of, like, flooding and actually being within the one-hundred-year flood lane. But I'm wondering if, um, you can share with us what, what's been the extent in which, or how will that be addressed? On one hand, on one hand, on the second one, something that I didn't see in the, in the documents is that this is also going to be heavily impacted by stormwater flooding. And so right now, even under moderate scenarios, as the U P maps showed, that Ocean Parkway is going to be problematic in that regard. Moving on, with two more extreme scenarios, all of the streets around the development site are going to be flooded. So I'm wondering, how does this come up? What are some of the ideas under discussion in terms of how will that be? And if you want to share anything now with that, when we see it again.
Yeah, um, I'm happy to speak to it with the applicant to share with me, but I also have, they can talk about this at the hearing. Um, in terms of the storm, I'll start with the stormwater flooding. Um, our understanding is that the risk is low. Um, the development would only be affected under the most conservative issued stormwater estimates with twenty-eighty C level rise assumptions. Um, I'll have them speak to that. And then in terms, they will have to, um, follow the appendix G building requirements since it's in the flood zone. Um, they will be dry flood proofing the levels below grade and below design flood elevation, including encapsulating mechanical areas. Um, they'll be using weight-resistant rough dry flood proofing wall and foundation systems. Um, they'll be using anchoring of the foundation to the piles to prevent flotation, collapse, or lateral movement of structure from groundwater pressure or wind. Um, they'll be using flood damage-resistant materials and finishes below grade. And they will also be, um, doing flood mitigation measures, such as a steel flood gate system installed at all building entrances, including the driveway, and these will be installed at the completion of construction.
Thanks so much. Are you, are you, were you going over the requirements or were you going over?
That's what they'll be.
That's what they'll be. So, yeah, potentially we will see.
That's what I'm asking you guys, but I can have them. I'll make sure they're ready to speak to that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much. And with that, this item is certified. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, great. Um, we're going to move on next to our pre-public hearing reviews. Madam Secretary.
The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of U D A P's designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property and zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Brooklyn Community District sixteen. Our presenter is Juki Sa.
Uh, Juki.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, for a U D A P, a zoning map amendment, and a zoning text amendment to facilitate a new nine-story, two-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand-square-foot development with two-hundred-ninety income-restricted units, twenty-six-thousand square feet of community facility space, and seventeen-thousand square feet of outdoor open space in Brownsville, Community District sixteen, Brooklyn. This application was certified on August twenty-first. Brownsville Art Center and Apartments is part of HPD's twenty-seventeen Brownsville Plan, which was a community-based planning process to develop a shared vision and plan for the future of Brownsville. In coordination with the release of the Brownsville Plan, HPD issued the Brownsville RFP to redevelop several sizable vacant city-owned sites within Brownsville, each focusing on a specific theme to address community goals. Specifically in response to the Brownsville Plan, Brownsville Art Center and Apartments is intended to be a hub for arts and culture as well as creative reading. Proposed actions would facilitate a new nine-story, two-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand-square-foot development with two-hundred-ninety income-restricted housing units. It would include twenty-six-thousand square feet of community facility space, which will include uses such as a contemporary art and media center, a performance arts school, a music school, and a collaborative performance space. The intent, as envisioned in the Brownsville Plan, is to serve as a cultural hub for the neighborhood. There will also be seventeen-thousand square feet of outdoor open space. The proposed development is anticipated to include several sustainability measures, including rooftop solar and an onsite stormwater detention tank. The applicant is proposing three actions to facilitate this project. First, the designation of an urban development action area, project approval of an urban development action area project, and disposition of vacant city-owned land to a sponsor selected by HPD. I referred to that previously as a U D A P. Second, a zoning map amendment to rezone part of an six, C, to an R7A and an R7AC24 district. Third, a zoning text amendment to map mandatory inclusionary housing options one. Twenty twenty-three, Community Board Sixteen's full board vote produced an unfavorable recommendation for the project with three in favor, twenty-one opposed, and one abstained. Community Board Sixteen attached a letter to explain their rationale and provided context on the vote. It contained concerns voiced at the community board hearing, which included the following. One, community preference on housing placement of local residents, including homeless individuals and veterans. Two, call for a redesign or update of the building facade to minimize what the board termed as institutional appearance. Three, to adjust the affordability of the units to include more thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent, and sixty percent AMI units and not exceed seventy percent AMI. Fourth, maximizing the unit size for studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom apartments within the program guidelines for HPD. And fifth, to include parking in the development. Um, and also, the community board letter noted that all parties involved, including Community Board Sixteen, Council Member Darlene Mealy, HPD, and the development team have had regular meetings during the U L process to work with these concerns. Moving on to the borough president's recommendation. On November fourteenth, the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing and on November twenty-second submitted a recommendation to approve the application with no conditions. The borough president's rationale cited several components of the project with a line with his comprehensive plan for Brooklyn. First, it noted this project's alignment with the B P's specific recommendations related to developing deeply affordable housing and prioritizing transit-oriented development. Regarding parking, the borough president noted that Community District Sixteen has one of the lowest rates of vehicle ownership in the borough and one of the highest rates of persons commuting by public transit. And that, I quote, "Providing off-street parking would be post-prohibitive and would reduce the project's capacity to deliver affordable housing and community facility art space." The borough president, president's recommendation also noted the project's local hiring, environmentally-friendly features, and community facility space for arts-based CBOs. Finally, the borough president encouraged HPD to explore the feasibility of including larger unit sizes in the project, both in terms of the unit's square footages and in the number of bedrooms to address Community District Sixteens, slightly higher than city average household size. And before we get into questions, um, the last thing I would like to note is a response to one of the commission questions at the time of certification. I'll note that there were quite a few around affordability, and I'm going to let the applicant speak to those on Wednesday. But there was a question regarding the other lots in the rezoning area, and I wanted to refer to this project's E A S. Um, so that would be the lots that are going to be rezoned that are not part of the development site. So in the E A S, it states that the non-city-owned lots in the rezoning area would not be developed or enlarged because of the proposed actions, because of the proposed actions, as they would not meet the potential, the potential soft site criteria. Um, with that concluded my presentation, I'll take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Juki. And, uh, as you noted, we're going to pick this up for a public hearing on Wednesday. So most of the questions, I think, will be for the applicant on things like affordability, unit, unit size, things like that. Um, uh, if there's anything anybody wants to say that they'd like the application applicant to, to answer on Wednesday, please be my guest. Um, Gordan, Commissioner Soriano.
Thank you, thank you. And, and it would be great to see a little more detail in terms of the sustainability measures. They sound really interesting. Uh, but, but I, I, for example, took out a little bit of, eh, oh, maybe. I want to know what, where, some, some of the things proposed in some cases could be contradictory, like, for example, full albedo. And in other cases, green roof. So I just want to, what was the first one? Albedo? Well, for example, there's a solar, and they're also suggesting full reflectivity in some cases.
Correct.
That's, that's the opposite of having a green roof.
Okay.
So where and why this one is proposed would be made a little more detailed.
Okay.
But, but in addition to that, uh, well, uh, I was also, given the fact that this is a city, a city project and, uh, city of yet for Brooklyn Control is out there. And we just saw on our HPD with full passive house of this size, exactly this number. I want to understand why, why, why not going for passive? Or why not going for something, uh, basically, how can these sustainability measures? Where exactly are we with that exactly?
Great. I was just going to say, that's excellent. We will have HPD pick that up on Wednesday.
I have one question for the department.
Go ahead. Yep.
Yeah, thank you. So, so another thing that is, is super interesting about this is the, um, urban development action area program designation. And because this is on urban renewal, or one of the requirements is that this was a previous urban renewal site. I'm wondering if, if you've seen any precedents, or can we, eh, explore any potential here for a prioritizing formerly displaced households that would be, that would be prioritized under an urban renewal? Eh, or in an urban renewal site? Is there anything in there that we could potentially explore to prioritize these families?
It's a great question, Commissioner Soriano. I don't have an immediate answer for you, but that's something we can look into.
Thank you.
And I think that might be a city planning question as well as the administrative agency, H P D. So, we can get back.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll pick this one up in a public hearing on Wednesday. Sarah, let's go on.
The sixth item on our agenda is a review of a non-U L R general project plan, G P P, in Brooklyn Community District nine. Our presenter is Jordan Pratt.
Hello, Jordan.
Uh, good afternoon, Chicagoic Commissioners. This afternoon, I'm following up on Kingsborough Psychiatric Center G P P, which I presented to the commission two weeks ago. This is Empire State Development Project. It's being sponsored pursuant to the New York State Urban Development Corporation Act, uh, U T C Act, which requires C P C review and the opportunity to submit a comment letter. This is a one-hundred-percent-income-restricted development with one-thousand-and-ninety units, containing a mix of unit types that would serve older adults, formerly homeless persons and low-income families and individuals. It is located at six eighty-one Clarkson Avenue in Brooklyn Community District nine. This was presented during the last C P C review session, and questions and comments from the commission were passed along to E S D shortly after. While we wait for their response, we have drafted a comment letter that was submitted in your package on Friday. We would like to check to see if there are any comments or concerns with the draft comment letter at this time.
Thank you, Chair. I, I really just wanted to thank you for including the paragraph on the stormwater, yeah, permanently. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Great. Thank you. I'll seek a set by a voice vote to send this letter to the Empire State Development Corporation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on.
The seventh item on our agenda is a non-U L R post-referral for cancellation of a previously proved restricted declaration in Queens Community District four. Presenting for the first time to the commission is Joy Kim.
All right, Joy, welcome.
Chair, recuse.
Commissioner, representative, recuse. Thank you, Commissioner. Joy, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This is a post-referral follow-up for a private application by Justice Avenue Tower LLC in the, in the Elmer's neighborhood of Queens Community District four. As a reminder, this application was referred out on October second, twenty twenty-three. The applicant proposes to terminate restrictive declaration D sixty and appendix D of the zoning resolution to utilize the ads of right commercial use provisions of the underlying C four-two zoning district. The restrictive declaration was placed on this property in nineteen seventy-two and was tied to its rezoning from R six to a C four-two zoning district. The, the restrictive declaration was placed on the property in, uh, sorry. Modifications to the declaration were made in nineteen seventy-seven and nineteen eighty, both of which never resulted in the full development of the plans attached to the restrictive declaration. The declaration allows for as-of-right buildings pursuant to R six regulations. And as such, the site is currently developed with an as-of-right eighteen-story building with residential and community facility uses totaling approximately three-hundred-thirty-thousand-five-hundred square feet of floor area at four-point-eight F A R. By canceling the separation, the applicant proposes including commercial uses within the existing building, including approximately twenty-three-thousand square feet of retail use on the ground floor. including approximately 23,000 square feet of retail use on the ground floor fronting Queens Boulevard, 55th Avenue and Justice Avenue, and approximately 22,000 square feet of office use to be located on the second through fourth floors. There is also approximately 134,000 square feet of community facility space to be located on the third and fourth floors, approximately 151,000 square feet of residential use on the fifth through 18th floors, including 184 dwelling units, and 424 parking spaces in the cellar and second floor. The applicant proposes to cancel the restrictive declaration pursuant to its terms, which requires approval by the City Planning Commission and City Council as successor to the Board of Estimate. If approved, this action would unlock 3.4 FAR of as-of-right commercial use. The applicant proposes to utilize the as-of-right commercial use to include commercial office space and ground floor retail space without changing the overall bulk of the building. This application was referred to Queens Community Board 4. On November 28th, 2023, the applicant discussed this application with the Landes Committee of the Community Board. We did not receive a formal recommendation from the board, but to summarize, the community board primarily had questions for the applicant related to operations of the charter school, of the current as-of-right charter school that is located within the building. In conclusion, the applicant, Justice Avenue Tower LLC, requests canceling of this restrictive declaration to allow for as-of-right commer, commercial use in the base of the building at 8808 Justice Avenue in Queens. Thank you and happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Joy. So functionally, the, by canceling the RD, would allow them to do the C42 in full with the commercial, correct?
Yeah.
Um, the building is built.
Yeah.
Uh, it has a four-story base and, um, i- is it, is that space in use today? What what's going on in that space now, four-story base?
Uh, part of the four-story base is, um, currently vacant. Um, it's meant for, uh, community facility uses, but, um, if we were to cancel this declaration, they would, this would enable them to seek other, um, other tenants under a commercial use.
Great. Thank you. Great. Thank you, Joy. Great job. And we will, uh, schedule this one for a vote for some time after we get our recommendations in from the community board.
If we can vote it ahead, um, yes.
Okay.
But we'll advise the patient to submit it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on. Future votes for Wednesday, December 13th. For consideration on Wednesday are SNAD zoning organizations in Bronx Community District 8, 4800 Independence Avenue Dormitory, and 4671 Grosner Avenue SNAP, also new materials for letters on each project. Also for consideration on Wednesday are SNAD zoning organizations in Bronx Community District 8, 680 West 232nd Street SNAP, and new material for testimonials and letters. Uh, we are joined today by Nate Peffron of the Bronx Office.
Hi, uh, good afternoon, Commissioners.
Great.
Um, can you, uh, can you hear me?
He's coming in.
Okay, uh, great. Um, uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. This, uh, is a very brief, uh, introduction to the 680 West 232nd Street SNAD application. The applicant rep for this project is Hal Dorfman Architects. They are seeking SNAD authorizations to facilitate a three-story community facility, community facility, which is a school at the, the address in Spite and Dival, uh, Community District 8 of the Bronx. They're sneak, they're seeking SNAD authorizations pursuant to zoning resolution section 105-421 and authorization to build, to modify the topography of a tier-one site and 105-425 to modify the botanic and tree preservation requirements. Um, the reason why this project is before you today, um, ordinarily, I believe the SNAD projects, uh, typically aren't, uh, presented uh, at review session, but, uh, when this project was referred out um, and reviewed by the community board, we were made aware of a restrictive covenant that applies to the site. Um, the restrictive covenant is dated in 1919 and essentially says that, um, the only use allowed on the site would be a single-family home. Um, the, uh, applicant has an argument against that and maintains that their, uh, community facility, uh, is still allowed onsite. Um, the city and, uh, DCP, uh, do not make, uh, legal judgments on the agreements between private entities. Um, so we only review the project for its completeness and its compliance with the SNAD rules and the underlying zoning. Um, I would also defer to our council to an, um, answer any more specific questions on that, um, legal determination, but I'm also happy to answer any other questions about this project. Thank you.
Point of clarification. So it's a proposal for certain modifications under SNAD. Uh, and the project that we have before us is a facility for kids which may be subject to some challenge under existing covenant over which we have no control. So if we approve it, which I believe we should do here, we are approving the things like the tree removals for the facility that is proposed. And if it is found that they are unable to proceed with that facility, then, uh, our approval here becomes null and void. Is that correct?
Well, uh, different from our council on that, but I, that, my understanding, that is, uh, correct.
Okay, well, I let's do it, Susan. Come on back. I, I believe I know the answer to this question and that it is correct, but I do want to make sure that I can confirm it.
I believe, believe that is correct. Um, yeah, that's, uh, my understanding is, is the authorization is for the purpose of this project. The project will either be able to happen or not depending on the outcome. Um, whatever the issue is with restricted.
Well, I guess the question that I have is, if we authorize the tree removals and the, the school facility is not able to be built on the basis of 100-year-old covenant, could they build the residential and continue with the tree removals? Or do they have to come back to us for a new SNAD approval?
So, um, and I would actually, I think it's, they would have to come back, but honestly, on that, the, that and I will have this, or they, sorry, the Bronx Office.
Yeah.
I believe they would have to come back if they want to establish.
Yeah, I, yes.
Because it's.
Okay, well, I, uh, we, I just, I thought that was a clear, I didn't think there was any, any debate on that point at all. But let us, so let's, we'll, we'll, I mean, it's up for, it's not today, we're not voting on it today, but let's get clarity on that point for Wednesday, uh, because I think it's an important one.
Yeah.
And I know that we don't have any control over the covenant, but we do have control over the the SNAD for the thing that's actually proposed, whether or not that actually can be built. Okay. Commissioner Murray?
I just want to ask a question and for Nate, and I believe that I do know the answer, is that if you're removing trees and you're, and you're getting tree credits to plant trees somewhere else, those credits are specific to what's being built because the body or the outline of the building is what determines what trees you're knocking down. So if you're coming back with a new home, I think that would affect the number of tree credits, because you may need to put trees back on the property. And I'll let Nate ask that on Wednesday, but that's my understanding of the stat.
So it did get confirmation, uh, Commissioner. Uh, they would have to come back if they changed the site plan and or structure. Um, if they use the same structure slash, uh, site plan, they do not.
Same structure, same site plan. Approval stands. Any change in either the site plan or the structure, they have to come back. Okay. Clear enough. That's what I thought. We're good. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, um, what else do we have?
Okay, um, moving on. Staff have prepared reports for 16611 91st Avenue Special Permit in Queens, New District 12, 230 Kent Avenue Res zoning and Brooklyn Community District 1 and 962 Pacific Street Res zoning and Brooklyn Community District 8. Also for consideration on Wednesday are zoning authorization in Staten Island Community District 1, 180 Campus Road, a SNAD CPC certification in Staten Island Community District 2, 64 Anfield Court Restoration. And lastly, for consideration on Wednesday is 3040 CNEC Place SNAD CPC certification in the Bronx, uh, Community District 8, which is included in the supplemental calendar, uh, which is in your materials. Any questions on those?
Commissioner Soria.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, Sarah. I have a question about 962 Pacific Street. I couldn't tell from the report. Is the applicant, uh, considering the restrictive declaration? Or or we're saying, no, that's outside of scope. It sounds like the latter, but I'm, I'm just, I want to confirm.
We can, uh, seek confirmation from the planning planner and provide a memo ahead of Wednesday's vote.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, well, with that, there is one other item. Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, uh, post-hearing follow-up. Um, for post-hearing follows, we have Simboli Terrace, which had a public hearing at the November 29th public meeting. There was a, um, letters from the applicants and your materials and Trevor Lovitz, who will discuss and available for questions.
Hi, Trevor.
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
It's been a long day, great, especially this quick. Uh, this was, uh, this project, Simboli Terrace, is a post-public hearing item. Public hearing took place Wednesday, November 29th. Uh, as Madam Secretary mentioned, following public commission, Commissioner Soria requested a memo on how the proposed development would incorporate cats of house design elements, which the applicant followed up with, hope it was to your satisfaction. Uh, the Department of City Planning staff supports HPD's proposed designation of the urban development action area, urban development action area project approval of the project and disposition of city-owned property and acquisition of property by the city, city to facilitate a 19-story mixed-use development containing 241 units of permanently deeply affordable income-restricted housing, 90 in supportive housing units, 75 replacement parking spaces, and approximately 30,000 square feet of community facility spaces on those today underutilized public site. That might be East 25th Precinct Service Parking Lot. The proposed development is the culmination of years of community-driven planning. Its program reflects the aspirations of 2017 East Harlem Res zoning, the point of agreements for which identify the precinct parking lot as a site for future affordable housing development, as well as the preceding East Harlem Neighborhood Plan, which recommended our 10 zoning on publicly owned sites to maximize the creation of affordable units and emphasized the creation of deeply affordable units and new supportive housing. Going farther back from 1968, Simboli Terrace realizes the unfulfilled objectives of the Upper Park Avenue Urban Renewal Area, which acquired and raised an assemblage of deteriorated tenants forming the development sites with the expectation, expectation of their eventual redevelopment as quality of affordable housing. The tenant that will anchor the community facility space, the Afro ladder Music and Art Center, addresses community desires for performing art spaces and will reflect East Harlem's rich cultural heritage. In total, the proposed development will bring 340 units of much-needed affordable housing to CD1. For these reasons, Department staff recommend approval of that application. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Soria?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the, the materials are, it's, suffice, answer my question. I just want to highlight how exciting it is that we have a city project of this size, passive house. It shows that it is possible. And also, you know, I think it sets an important precedent in terms of, you know, other places in the city that, that where we should be thinking exactly along these lines. So thank you so much for that.
I'll relay that to you, if it could happen.
Great. Thank you very much. And with that, uh, we are done for the day. Thank you all very much for your time and attention. We will see you Wednesday morning and, uh, we'll pick it up then. We've got a couple of items on the agenda and a couple of small follow-ups. We'll look forward to seeing you then. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you for the support. Thanks, Michael.